Sarah Vaughan, Fascinating Rhythm, recorded live at Rosie's, recorded in May of 1978, and just released for the very first time. A brand-new release, and thanks to the folks at Resonance Records for making that happen. Sarah Vaughan. Pat Metheny, The First Circle. And Vince Guaraldi, The Ladies In Love With You. On KJazz 88.1, a service of California State University, Long Beach.
Grammy Award-winning Ramsey Lewis and special guest... Grammy-winning vocalist Dee Dee Bridgewater. Appearing in concert at the Music Center's Walt Disney Concert Hall on Saturday, June 25th, in an All-Star Benefit for KJazz 88.1 FM. Tickets to see the Grammy Award-winning Ramsey Lewis with special guest Grammy-winning vocalist Dee Dee Bridgewater and Grammy-nominated vocalist Jane Monheit at the KJazz Summer Benefit Concert Saturday, June 25th are available at the Walt Disney Concert Hall box office or Ticketmaster.com.
Welcome to the Grammy Award-winning Ramsey Lewis. And special guest Grammy-winning vocalist Dee Dee Bridgewater. Appearing in concert at the Music Center's Walt Disney Concert Hall on Saturday, June 25th, in an All-Star Benefit for KJazz 88.1 FM. Tickets to see the Grammy Award-winning Ramsey Lewis with special guest Grammy-winning vocalist Dee Dee Bridgewater and Grammy-nominated vocalist Jane Monheit at the KJazz Summer Benefit Concert Saturday, June 25th are available at the Walt Disney Concert Hall box office or Ticketmaster.com. Grammy Award-winning Ramsey Lewis. And special guest Grammy-winning vocalist Dee Dee Bridgewater. Grammy-nominated vocalist Jane Monheit. Appearing in concert at the Music Center's Walt Disney Concert Hall on Saturday, June 25th, in an All-Star Benefit for KJazz 88.1 FM. Tickets to see the Grammy Award-winning Ramsey Lewis with special guest Grammy-winning vocalist Dee Dee Bridgewater and Grammy-nominated vocalist Jane Monheit at the KJazz Summer Benefit Concert Saturday, June 25th are available at the Walt Disney Concert Hall box office or Ticketmaster.com. Grammy Award-winning Ramsey Lewis. And special guest Grammy-winning vocalist Dee Dee Bridgewater. Grammy-nominated vocalist Jane Monheit. Appearing in concert at the Music Center's Walt Disney Concert Hall on Saturday, June 25th, in an All-Star Benefit for KJazz 88.1 FM. Tickets to see the Grammy Award-winning Ramsey Lewis with special guest Grammy-winning vocalist Dee Dee Bridgewater and Grammy-nominated vocalist Jane Monheit at the KJazz Summer Benefit Concert Saturday, June 25th are available at the Walt Disney Concert Hall box office or Ticketmaster.com.
This is America's jazz and blues station, KJazz 88.1, and we're having a great benefit starring Ramsey Lewis and Jane Monheit, the KJazz Summer Benefit, on Saturday, June 25th at Disney Hall. Now, you've got to go there for that, man. That's a great place to have a concert. And I've played for KJazz at two of these, and I tell you, I love it. It's a high benefit. So get your tickets. Jane Monheit and Ramsey Lewis, I mean, it doesn't get any better than those two. And speaking of that, this is Jane in her wonderful version of Surrender on KJazz 88.1 with Steve Tyrell.
Never mind the dishes piled high in the sink. Never mind the weather on your work day. You'll be running all day long. Trying to be everything to everybody. Everything to everybody. Let's just still and see what a little salad can bring. Oh, won't you shed more just a little wine? Right now, no one is aiming to impress. But no one's there. Now, this is not a test of the world. The world is unbound. And you can't always be made of a tough stone. So just surrender. Oh, surrender. Never resolve all wrong ways. Now, when this is the safest place, just surrender. Oh, surrender. It's only us who're given it to trust. And tomorrow is just as usual. There will be lots of time for the daily cry. But now, hold on tight like we're in the eye and don't let go. Give me something we can rub our hands around. Or rub our hands around. When there's nothing right and nothing wrong, now that I'm with the sun and nothing that you do. Surrender. It's only us who're given it to trust.
KJazz FM and HD1, Long Beach, Los Angeles. This is KJazz 88.1, a service of California State University, Long Beach.
This is Steve Tyrell riding around with you on this Monday. I'll be with you until eight o'clock tonight when it's time for Bubba Jackson, that's BWB, Bebopping with Bubba, and he'll take you till midnight tonight. And we're going to start this seven o'clock hour off with Billie Holiday and one of her signature songs. This is Billie in "God Bless the Child" from her album Lady Sings the Blues.
Them that's got shall have, them that's not shall lose. So the Bible says, and it still is news. Mama may have, Papa may have. But God bless the child that's got his own. That's got his own. Yes, the strong gets smart while the weak ones fail. Empty pockets don't ever make the grade. Mama may have, Papa may have. But God bless the child that's got his own. That's got his own.
Welcome to the City Council meeting for the city of Seal Beach, Monday, May 9th, 2016. Call the meeting to order, and can you join me, please, in the Plight of Allegiance? By Plight of Allegiance...
...of the United States of America, and under the public authority stands, one nation, one tribe, indivisible, and every being of us.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Masalavet.
Here.
Mayor Proten Verapapa.
Here.
Councilmember Deaton.
Here.
Councilmember Sloan.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to ask that we move Item I, which is the Bay Theater Presentation, right after Presentations and Recognition, and before Oral Communications so that the public can comment on what they see in here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Gary?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Items F and H.
F?
Items F and H. F is in Frank, H is in Harry.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor Masalavet, if I could read into the record information that was distributed regarding revised agenda items.
Yes.
This evening, the Public Works Department provided and distributed on the dais, and it's available for the public, changes to Agenda Item D, Plans and Specifications for the 2016 Annual Slurry Sail Project, CIP Number ST1601. Staff found typographical errors in the Slurry Sail Program table regarding the staff report.
Have we been provided a copy of that?
It is in... At the dais, I provided a folder that has it. Yeah, it has all of the information that was distributed. Agenda Item F, Council Chamber Project, excuse me. Staff added an item to include installing panic push buttons at the dais for the cost of $25,000 and let the Financial Impact Section reflect changes. There was a revised resolution attached. Agenda Item G, Cal Recycling Grant Request. Staff has attached the grant request application. Agenda Item H, Westminster Storm Drain Report. Staff revised the matching fund source from gas tax funds to general fund, assigned fund balances, and closed was the revised staff report and resolution acknowledging the needed corrections. We also received a PowerPoint presentation from OCTA regarding senior mobility. And a PowerPoint presentation from the City Attorney on the Brown Act Workshop.
These are all in this yellow folder here?
Yes.
First off, we have Presentations. We have a proclamation for drowning awareness month to the Orange County Fire Authority. Tracy McQuillan of OCFA is here. This proclamation is presented in support of OCFA's Always Watch Your Child Around Water and Never Swim Alone campaigns. OCFA will launch the 24-week Water Safety Campaign in May, and it will run through October. Drowning is the leading cause of death and disability in California for children under five years of age, and a major problem for adults aged 35 to 64. As a result, there were 26 fatal drownings and 49 fatal incidents in both age categories in 2015. Thank you, Tracy, for coming.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council, City Manager, and staff. You summed up a lot of the things that I was going to talk about.
Sorry.
No, that's great. That's great. As you spoke about May through October, our campaigns, we work with the Marine Division as well with the beaches, and the stats are correct with the drownings and the fatalities. The one that kind of caught my eye is drowning is the leading cause of death for children under the age of five within the county. And it's, you know, they're accidents, but they're, we say them as accidents, it can be prevented through watching your child, through swimming with a buddy like you spoke about, especially in the ocean, even in the backyard. Our pools in our backyards are the leading cause of where a lot of it takes place, as well as any body of water, bathtubs, mop buckets, toilets, pools, spas, ponds, any standing water. I know it's amazing to hear, I personally have been on a call where I had a very young child drown in a bucket. So, it happens, you know, you hear about it, I don't think that's amazing, but it happened. So, it's something that is avoidable, and we just want to get the word out there, and as well as watching, you know, our barriers around our pools. And the final result of that is for everybody to learn CPR and know that technique so we can help somebody when we need to. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I could, just to add to the significance of that item, I'd like to ask our Marine Safety Chief, Joe Bailey, just comment on the efforts of the Orange County Task Force on Drowning Prevention since he is one of the representatives of that countywide team. Chief Bailey?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Manager. Just to follow up on what Tracy said, you know, according to the OCFA, we had 118 incidents of drowning reported in 2015, and 50 of them resulted in death. You know, the other 68, there are repercussions from even if people survive drowning. So, it's a tragic thing that happens in our county. And with that being said, I'm a part of the Orange County Task Force on Drowning Prevention. It's a countywide task force that includes the OCFA, the Healthcare Agency, Hope Hospital, nurses, doctors, community planners that are working on legislation for fences in the backyard. So, it's a wide-ranging task force. But one of the first things we worked on is a educational campaign that's going to be starting shortly, actually in the next few weeks, the first round of the campaign. And it's, the campaign's focused on young kids. We want parents to watch their kids, you know, it only takes a second. And I know our suggestion in Seal Beach Marine Safety is when people have backyard parties that someone actually wears a name tag or a clip that says, "I'm the water watcher." So, you know, we know people don't want to be focused on the pool during a party, for instance, but they can take that clip for half an hour and they're the water watcher, and they hand that to someone else, and then they're the water watcher. So, whoever has the tag is a specified water watcher. And the other group we're focusing on in this task force is the senior citizens. And so, oftentimes, children will actually survive a drowning incident where senior citizens normally don't. And so, those are the two age groups we're focusing on for this ad campaign. You'll be seeing these on the sides of buses and bus benches. And lastly, as a part of that, the OCFA and the Orange County Healthcare Agency and the City of Irvine have all donated $25,000 each to this advertisement program. The Orange County Supervisors have put forward $200,000 of matching funds. So, I'll be bringing back to the city a request to put some money in our hat for a countywide drowning prevention task force. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Is Mara James here? I was supposed to come down there. Am I? Thank you. Now, this is a proclamation that's presented in support of the National Mental Health Awareness Month. To enhance public awareness of mental illness, 51 million Americans have a mental disorder in any given year, and nearly two-thirds of all people with a diagnosable mental illness do not receive a mental health treatment. And we would like to present this to the Association in recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month. And if you would like to say a few words, please do so.
Well, my name is Mary James, and I'm the founder and CEO of Extraordinary Lives Foundation. We are a new non-for-profit organization who's committed to raising awareness of mental health challenges with an emphasis on children and adolescents. I would like to thank Mayor Masalavet and the city of Seal Beach for inviting me tonight and for joining a growing number of cities in Orange County to proclaim May as National Mental Health Awareness Month. Youth mental health challenges have been stigmatized for far too long, and it's time for this to change. And with that being said, I'm a part of the Orange County Task Force on Drowning Prevention. It's a countywide task force that includes the OCFA, the Healthcare Agency, HOG Hospital, nurses, doctors, community planners that are working on legislation for fences in the backyard. So, it's a wide-ranging task force. But one of the first things we worked on is a educational campaign that's going to be starting shortly, actually in the next few weeks, the first round of the campaign. And it's... The campaign's focused on young kids. We want parents to watch their kids. You know, it only takes a second. And I know our suggestion in Seal Beach Marine Safety is when people have backyard parties that someone actually wears a name tag or a clip that says, "I'm the Water Watcher." So, you know, we know people don't want to be focused on the pool during a party, for instance, but they can take that clip for half an hour, and they're the Water Watcher, and they hand that to someone else, and then they're the Water Watcher. So, whoever has the tag is a specified Water Watcher. And the other group we're focusing on in this task force is the senior citizens. And so, oftentimes, children will actually survive a drowning incident where senior citizens normally don't. And so, those are the two age groups we're focusing on for this ad campaign. You'll be seeing these on the sides of buses and bus benches. And lastly, as a part of that, the OCFA and the Orange County Healthcare Agency and the City of Irvine have all donated $25,000 each to this advertisement program. The Orange County Supervisors have put forward $200,000 of matching funds. So, I'll be bringing back to the city a request to put some money in our hat for a countywide drowning prevention task force. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Is Mara James here? I was supposed to come down there. Thank you. Now, this is a proclamation that's presented in support of the National Mental Health Awareness Month to enhance public awareness of mental illness. Fifty-one million Americans have a mental disorder in any given year, and nearly two-thirds of all people with a diagnosable mental illness do not receive a mental health treatment. And we would like to present this to the Association and in recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month. And if you would like to say a few words, please do so.
Well, my name is Mary James, and I'm the founder and CEO of Extraordinary Lives Foundation. We are a new nonprofit organization who's committed to raising awareness of mental health challenges with an emphasis on children and adolescents. I would like to thank Mayor Masalavet and the City of Seal Beach for inviting me tonight and for joining a growing number of cities in Orange County to proclaim May as National Mental Health Awareness Month. Youth mental health challenges have been stigmatized for far too long, and it's time for this to change. Our foundation hosted its first High Five-a-Thon event this past weekend in Laguna Beach High School. The proceeds for this event are being donated to two very important inpatient mental health care facilities, CHOP Children's in Orange and Mission Hospital, Laguna Beach. You may be surprised to know that there are currently no psychiatric beds for children under the age of 12 years old in Orange County, and the parents are required to go to San Diego and LA. Thank you again for supporting our efforts to raise awareness.
Thank you. On a personal note, my husband and I were foster parents for 20 years. We had a few children come and go. One of them was temporary placement, of course, waiting for bed space in the Psychiatric Board of Children's Hospital. So, these things go on every day, all day. And really, being aware of mental health issues for all the people in your family or your friends' families is very important. And it's very important that you do the most that you can for the people who are suffering. Let's see, we have the fastest resident award in Run Seal Beach, Greg Phillips. Greg Phillips is the president of Run Seal Beach, and he's going to present the award.
Honorable Mayor, Council, and Staff, my name is Greg Phillips. I live in Uptown Seal Beach and the president for Run Seal Beach. I'm here tonight to thank the city, our generous sponsors, volunteers, and the community for making this year's Run Seal Beach a huge success. Run Seal Beach is a volunteer-run organization raising funds and awareness for local recreation and programs throughout our community. The event was April 9th and featured a 5K walk and run, a 10K run, and a 1K kids fun run in Fun Zone. We had over 2,300 registered runners and walkers and nearly 3,500 finishers on race day. We have a video we'd like to show you. I'd like to thank SVP and Roden for putting the video together for us. We really enjoyed it. At this time, I'd like to invite the rest of the board up and announce our resident 5K and 10K winners. Our Seal Beach resident winners are the following, and if you're here tonight, please come up and join us. For the women's 5K winner, we have Stevie Hogan with a time of 22 minutes, 1 second. Our men's 5K winner is Nicholas Musser with a time of 19 minutes, 50 seconds. Our women's 10K winner is Margie Derouter with a time of 44 minutes, 3 seconds. And our men's 10K winner is Lorenzo Tyner with a time of 37 minutes, 51 seconds.
She's ready to tell us.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all the resident winners again. Lasting Run Seal Beach Board is proud to announce that we will be giving away $135,000 this year through our grant process, which will help our countless residents, students, servicemen, and others who are served by our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It was a cloudy day, but it sure was fun. Pacific Coast Highway Corridor Study. The Orange County Transportation Authority is here, Joe Alcock specifically, to talk about what they're going to be doing on Pacific Coast Highway to improve the traffic. This is a test, so everybody pay attention.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council. As was mentioned, my name is Joe Alcock, and I am OCTA's Corridor Studies Section Manager. And we wanted to walk you through the PCH corridor study, which we've been working with the cities on for the last two years. Sorry. Before I get into the study, just wanted to provide a little bit of background about PCH. I'm sure most of you know this already, but it's a 37-mile-long corridor stretching from here in Seal Beach all the way down to San Juan Mini. Our study covered all the coastal cities, all six of them. Two-thirds of the roadway here is owned by the Caltrans, it's state right-of-way like here in Seal Beach, and then one-third is locally controlled primarily in South County. And PCH obviously provides coastal access, but it's also a key parallel route to some of our Orange County freeways, the 5 and the 73 in South County, and here in Seal Beach, the 405. And it also functions as a main street in certain places like Laguna Beach. It serves more like an urban arterial like here in Seal Beach, and then it also functions like an expressway along Bolsa Chica. And PCH is Orange County's most multi-modal corridor. It has significant numbers of bikes, pedestrians, transit users, and cars, all operating within an extremely tight right-of-way. So, given all these unique challenges, the six Orange County coastal cities, with our partner Caltrans and us OCTA, agreed to conduct a corridor study for PCH. Study started in 2014, and we're now currently completing it. The study's been a tremendous amount of collaboration with your city staff as well as all the other cities along the corridor, as well as our funding partner, Caltrans. And I especially wanted to take this opportunity to thank David Spitz of your Public Works Department for his participation on our study team. And really, the goal of this study was to identify a broad range of multimodal and long-term improvements, both on a corridor-wide basis and a city-by-city basis. We wanted to look at everyone using the corridor, including bikes, pedestrians, transit users, as well as cars, and then look at regional needs throughout the corridor, and also then focus more specifically on localized, primarily city-level needs. To do this, as I mentioned, we worked with city engineers and public works directors from each of the coastal cities, Caltrans as well as SCAG. And our first step in the study process was to identify the corridor's needs or problems. And so, here on the left-hand side of the slide, we have some of PCH's corridor-wide needs or problems. And they generally include conflicts amongst modes. So, for example, bicyclists riding between parked cars and moving vehicles, traffic congestion, which speaks for itself, constrained right-of-way, which limits the type of improvement recommendations we can reasonably propose, more consistent aesthetic treatments, looking at better signage and making PCH more of a destination corridor. And then the corridor is subject to frequent closures either from weather or special events, such as the US Open of surfing over in Huntington. And when these special events or weather events do occur, there's limited parallel routes. So, these are all the challenges that are operating within the corridor. And from here, we went on to define the purpose of the study or specific improvement objectives for the corridor. And some of these region-wide purposes are highlighted on the right-hand portion of the slide, and they include improving safety and mobility for all modes, so looking at dealing with bike and car interactions, improving traffic flow through the corridor, maintaining operations during closures, and encouraging the use of parallel routes, and also using technology, intelligent transportation systems management, so computers and signage and apps and those type of technology enhancements to provide routing information to corridor users to try and get the corridor operating more efficiently. And then for Seal Beach specifically, some of the needs that we primarily focused upon would be addressing spot congestion at key corridors or key intersections along the corridor, and then significant bike and safety concerns in terms of dealing and recommending continuous bike lanes through the city, as well as looking at some safety recommendations. Next, from here, we identified the problem, we identified our improvement objectives, then we developed an initial set of five alternatives. These ranged anywhere from simple bike lane restriping to major capital projects like rebuilding bridges or elevated viaducts is one option that was put on the table. We performed an initial screening of those recommended alternatives and for both physical and financial feasibility. If an improvement didn't meet financial or physical feasibility, it wasn't recommended for further consideration. So, a lot of the higher-end, more costly improvements sort of fell out at that point. And then all of the remaining improvement options were advanced for a second round of more detailed screening where we focused on evaluating feasibility, trade-offs between costs benefit, and then enhancing the corridor-wide experience for all users. This resulted in a remaining set of three alternatives, which are identified on the slide here. The first being a transportation system demand, transportation demand management strategy. We call it a TSM-TDM alternative, as is shown on the slide. And it included relatively minor and less complicated improvement recommendations. Then we went to the next step, which is called low capital, which focused on low-to-mid-level recommendations. And then we proceeded to a high-capital alternative, which focuses on the larger, more complex types of project recommendations. So, the improvements contained in each of the remaining alternatives, which I'm going to get into on the next couple of slides, are the basis of the study's findings, and that study is currently available on our website, which is OCCA.net. I can provide the link to the council. I believe the staff has a report as well. The recommended improvement options for each of these three remaining alternatives that I talked about, the TSM, the low capital, the high capital, were developed, again, both on the corridor-wide basis, the 37 miles of the entire limits, as well as city-by-city basis. And they were also reviewed extensively by our study team, which included representatives of each of the participating cities in the corridor to ensure that what is being recommended is both consensus-based and locally supported by the communities. And on this slide, I'm just going to highlight one example just to kind of show you how our recommendations work coming from the study. The study's recommended improvements are... This one is a corridor-wide one, so it's generally applicable anywhere along the corridor. And it focused upon addressing one need. I talked about purpose and need in the very beginning of the presentation. So, the need here in the corridor, and this is anywhere along it, would be heavy congestion leading to significant delays, traffic delays. So, we have these three alternatives, and within these three alternatives, there's recommendations for each. So, the TSM-TDM or low-cost alternative calls for implementation of a traffic management program or a B- program, or a beach app. The low-capital alternative calls for signal synchronization of PCH. And then finally, the high-capital alternative would call for transit hubs, where key-high-volume and transfer locations, we put these hubs in for buses, and then working with signal synchronization to try and enhance the efficiency of the bus system operating through the corridor. And as this example demonstrates, the study's recommendations, they really provide a toolbox of improvement options that lead agencies like the city can choose to implement, either independently or cumulatively, as funding and priorities permit over time. So we did the corridor-wide one, and then the study dives into more detail, looking at each of these specific cities. So I now have an example of a need in the Seal Beach area, and what the recommended improvement strategies are for each of the three alternatives. So in this case, the problem is bikes having to navigate between parked cars, bus stops, and moving vehicles while traveling on PCH between Main Street and Seal Beach Boulevard. And so for the TSM alternative, the recommendation to deal with that issue would be including signage or signs to direct bicyclists to immediately parallel routes, like Electric Avenue. The low-capital alternative, then we'd recommend, is minor street widening, along with lane width reduction, so that you could put a bike lane in on PCH. And then the higher-end alternative would recommend relocation of on-street parking to immediately close areas, so that bike lanes can be striped through the entire limits of PCH. Some of the other examples in the study for Seal Beach include spot intersection improvements, putting in second left-hand turn lanes, right-hand turn lanes, and then completion of a continuous bike lane through the city, looking at doing some bike and pedestrian improvements in spot locations, completing sidewalks, as well as some minor safety and operational issues in the PCH area from Seal Beach Boulevard to Anderson Street. So we've developed all these recommendations. Now what's next? We've got this long-range planning study. We're currently beginning our outreach with the city councils to brief them on study findings, to solicit any input they may have on the results of the study. This is our first presentation. We'll be working our way down the corridor to get input from all the councils. And we anticipate that study findings are going to be incorporated into Caltrans, OCTA, and SCAG's long-range planning documents. And they're also likely going to be used to assist lead agencies, either Caltrans or the cities, or whoever that lead agency might be, in applying for competitive grant funds in the future, to initiate subsequent project development activities, such as completing environmental documents, doing final design, potentially ultimate construction. So in closing, I just wanted to reiterate, the study's a long-term vision document for the corridor. It provides a toolbox for all the cities to look at specific problems, and provides a range of improvement alternatives from low to high, which can be implemented, again, either cumulatively or one by one over time. So with that, that concludes my basic overview, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Vera Papas.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Hi, Mr. Alcock. I have a couple of questions. The complete streets concept, can you elaborate on how that works in with this concept, and is this part of the whole complete streets concept?
This is absolutely part of the complete streets concept. When we first put this study together, we thought we'd be recommending, you know, completing additional travel lanes throughout the entire corridor. And it became, quickly became apparent that the focus of this study, the desires of the cities and Caltrans, was to look at these interactions between bikes, pedestrians, and some real safety issues in the corridor. And the study does recommend several types of improvement recommendations to clean up some of those issues that are occurring throughout the corridor.
Okay. Last month, I believe, your office came here, and they talked about the OC Loop project. That's a bicycle route that goes on the perimeter of Orange County, comes down the River Jedy to First Street to Ocean Avenue, basically through the middle of town, I think. Now, is this different? Because this seems like it's more on Pacific Coast Highway than through the center of town.
So this study incorporated that study, but added to it. So the project in Seal Beach, it's part of the OC Loop, is actually a recommendation in this study as well. So that's carried forward, and actually OCTA is working with Caltrans in the next fiscal year to kind of start doing some initial design work on concepts for that.
Now, the Navy base just had a public hearing on an additional shipping dock over by Alamos Bay, and that's a big need for our area, Pacific Coast Highway from Seal Beach Boulevard to Surfside. Is there anything in the plans for improvement of that, or how does that work into the whole complete streets and OC Loop and the corridor study?
So the need you're referring to is a bike lane?
Yeah, bike lane and pedestrian sidewalk.
Yeah, so the project from the Loop would actually look at doing an off... Well, it's going to look at several concepts. One would be on PCH, and the other one would be off PCH, a buffer, separated cycle track within the area.
So would the corridor study address that bridge that goes over the Navy area? I mean, is that something that you would look at as far as pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic?
So at this point, a corridor study is sort of a 30,000-foot document. We're identifying needs and potential improvement recommendations about specific alternatives, which would ultimately be either recommended or constructed. Those come later at the design phase. So while we recognize a need, we have identified some improvement recommendations. Whether it be a specific bridge or not, we can't say for certain at this point.
But you're working closely with our engineering department, Public Works Department, to address those needs. I'm sure Mr. Hoes giving you all the input on that.
Yes, we'll continue to work with the city closely.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. This past week, I was at a Southern California Association of Governments conference that focused on transportation. Are you working with them in any way on this corridor study, so that we're not doing two things on the same subject with different people?
No, that's correct. SCAG was actively involved in our study team. They participated throughout the entire study process. They're aware of it. And depending on where we go, when the study's wrapped up, it could potentially be put into their regional transportation plan.
Okay. I noticed on one of the pictures, there were bike racks near the... Early, yeah, right there. Now, Santa Monica has a very sophisticated bike-sharing program. Is that part of the plan that you've prepared?
Not at this point.
That comes next.
Yeah, we were looking more at actually getting the facilities input, recommending that the facilities closing gaps in bike lanes, kind of making sure the system's in place. That's kind of the recommendations coming out of that. Kind of the second step, as you design projects, would be kind of looking at how you can augment it with some of these other amenities, like bike parking, that kind of stuff.
I think it's pretty challenging to put bike lanes on Pacific Coast Highway along that whole 37-mile corridor. It's mind-boggling, thinking about it, and thinking about the safety, although there are people that bike on that street daily, multiple people.
So that is, remember we talked about the three alternatives, the low end, the middle, and the high end, the high cost, high complexity. Putting that bike lane throughout the corridor is one of the... While it's a clear need, it is a highly costly and highly complex recommendation. So we recognize that it is a need. It is something that we should continue to work on with the city, but we do recognize the idea of removing parking is something we need to coordinate with the California Coastal Commission more in depth. We tried to engage with them on this planning study. However, they kind of come in later at project development, so they didn't really weigh in at this phase, but that is an astute observation.
Anything with autonomous cars, car sharing?
Not a lot of that. Again, we're focused more on the physical improvements for the corridor. Autonomous cars are kind of this emerging trend within the industry, something we probably need to look more at, but at this point, it's trying to figure out what kind of infrastructure they may need. It's a challenge, and we're still kind of trying to navigate through that.
I'm interested in seeing the report that you prepared, and then kind of looking at what I came across at that conference last week, and how you guys are coordinating that, because it's very important that it works for all the cities and down the whole corridor, and that the future is built into this, so we don't have to come back in five years and rethink it.
And regardless of this study, we, on a daily basis, consistently interact with SCAG. We work very closely with them in all of our planning activities. So very much aware of what they propose in the RTP, and how that fits in the Orange County context, and we work with them very closely.
Good. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Could you discuss a little bit on how you're doing a bike lane by reducing the lanes on the... Does that compromise those lanes at all, when you do that?
Well, what the plan would be, would be to reduce the width of the vehicle lane. In many cases, you can get... In some cases, you can get a design exception through Caltrans. Caltrans has ultimately ultimate approval authority here, because it is state right-of-way. However, if you can make those documentations and pass that mandatory design exceptions, you can theoretically reduce the lanes. It is challenging. You need to be able to document that. You need to be able to back it up and gain the support of the Caltrans engineers. But it is a concept that cities are increasingly looking for, because, you know, having to retrofit the current infrastructure we have to, you know, accommodate all these users is a challenge. So one place you can give sometimes is skinning down the lanes, or kind of shaving off medians and those type of concepts, which we have identified in the study.
Would that be a viable alternative for PCH here through Seal Beach, to gain another lane for a bike?
That's what's recommended, based upon the input we got and the desires we got from our study working group, was that they would like to incorporate another bike lane, and sort of, again, on a corridor-wide basis, try and enhance that connectivity of bike lanes all throughout the corridor.
Thank you.
I know that Second Street in Long Beach is not a corridor, part of the corridor, or even a Caltrans street, but I think it's a good example that people around here could visualize and see what OCTA is thinking about in terms of creating bike lanes down this corridor. And it seems to work on Second Street in Long Beach. Are you familiar with it?
Yeah.
It seems to work most of the time. So is that something on the concept that you're thinking about?
Yeah, we actually do.
Because it's still, they still have parking along the curb, then they have the green bike lane, and then sort of shared with cars.
Yeah, sort of. So it's sort of context-dependent. We do recommend in certain parts of the corridor, maybe not in Seal Beach, because it's not as dense in terms of the bikeways as other parts of the corridor, bike users, in recommending green striping, similar to kind of what they have in Long Beach, to kind of deal with the turn movements and the safety issues that kind of occur with cars trying to make rides over bike lanes and those type of concepts. I do have the executive summary from the study, which I'll leave behind for the clerk, but we do have some graphics of what we're thinking of. These may not be specifically Seal Beach, but they are examples of kind of the concepts we're recommending. Where you do look at a buffer, may not be the big green lines like Long Beach, but, you know, you could show a bike lane in each direction, and those type of recommendations that are more consistent with your community, as opposed to Long Beach, which is much more dense.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could we get that sent digitally, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was going to mention that when I commented to the Navy on the project, I suggested that for the community, they may consider providing land adjacent to Pacific Coast Highway between Seal Beach Boulevard and Sunset Beach, well, Surfside, excuse me, Surfside. But the bridges, as Councilman Vera Papas said, do create some of the issue, but at least you could be off the street for some portion of the project, so.
Yeah, and the Navy's interest there probably supermost in their mind, and having people cross over that's not on the street is an issue, a security issue for them. So, yeah, that's an obstacle.
Well, there's land available. I don't know if it's Caltrans or the Navy's land.
I don't either. I don't either.
There was the old plan that Caltrans had, that we had, that Caltrans scuttled, where we had the side bridge that went over for bike use. And we've made a whole bike lane that goes out to, I guess you could call it the bike lane to nowhere, because Caltrans then decided that they weren't in favor of that. But that's a way to get over that bridge, is to go back to that extended lane idea.
And as I mentioned, we have a planning study. It's subject to our board approving the budget, next fiscal year's budget, where we could, where that's anticipated to look at some of those issues of that bike lane through there.
So maybe you could take that back to your group then, because I mean, all the plans were done. I mean, there's a lot of work already in there.
Yeah, we would definitely, if we proceed down that road with that effort, we would definitely pull in that previous, you know, work efforts as well.
Well, it may influence whether or not you go down that road, so to speak.
Right.
Because it's all there. I mean, you've got the information. It's engineered, and it could influence your decision-making.
How much is Caltrans on board to this type of project?
So that's sort of the open issue, is that Caltrans is changing, albeit slowly. There's a lot of direction coming down from Sacramento about being more sensitive to complete streets, and looking at planning, or looking at providing bike-type of facilities. And it's slowly, it's filtered through the planning department. We've seen that a lot on this study, that they're open to a lot more of the complete streets type of concepts.
I think the bike use, I don't remember Caltrans being a participant.
I don't know specifically which meetings, but the planning staff is involved. The state, it's still state right-of-way, so ultimately you do come down to a design engineer that has to sign off, and that's sometimes a challenge, but it looks like it's starting to kind of filter through the agency a little bit more than it has in the past.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much. Oh, by the way, how long you think it's going to take to complete this study?
So we probably, we're hitting all the councils. Our last presentation would be in July. If we don't have massive changes after all those council presentations, we would consider it final, thereabouts, in July.
Okay.
Was OCT aware of the program that, or the plans that Councilman Deaton just mentioned? Were you guys aware of that? I don't know. I've seen that.
I don't know. I haven't seen it specifically.
Michael, do you know if they're aware of that? Of the project to put adjacent?
The cantilevered bike lane off of the PCH bridge.
There hasn't been any discussion on that. Not, it hasn't been before.
In a long time.
In a long time, correct. It was mentioned before.
It's something we need to get in the program, so that they're... I think we should be offering that to them now.
Well, I tried.
Well, give it to them, and let Caltrans turn OCTA down.
Yeah, I know we've heard some of the history. I, you know, we probably have to get the documentation.
Is staff able to get to OCTA, that which we have, so they can pursue it?
Absolutely.
I think that takes care of it there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the information. Very helpful. And last but not least, bus stop consolidation pro... Are you finished?
I'm back.
Oh, that's right. Bus stop consolidation program, Route 60 update. That's about 60 bus.
Right, so I'll just keep this short. Bus service spacing efficiency program. The goal is a pilot project, looking at to make the bus routes more efficient, quicker, through a few high-volume corridors, just trying to test some concepts. Originally, one of the recommended removals of a bus stop was here in Seal Beach on Westminster Avenue, at the Westminster Avenue Kits location. It's right before Seal Beach Boulevard. We'd done some subsequent planning work, met with the city, got feedback from our own bus drivers, as well as the public, and we are no longer recommending removal of that stop or any other stop. stop or any other stops within Seal Beach. So what you have is going to be maintained. The study will continue. There's, if you want more information on some of the other recommendations of that study, we can give it to you. It's at our website, octa.net/BSEP. But again, in terms of Seal Beach, we're not envisioning stop removals at this point.
All right. So bus line 60 stays untapped?
At this point, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we moved the Bay Theater up to this point on the agenda. So I understand there's a presentation from Bay Theater representatives. If you would like to come up right now, we would love to hear you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. I'd like to, ladies and gentlemen, fellow citizens, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Paul Dunlap. I'm the founder of Dunlap Property Group and we are a real estate investment company. I started in real estate in Orange County in 1976 and have been full-time in this ever since. I started my own company in 1991, Dunlap Property Group, and our focus at that point was to acquire and redevelop and rehabilitate apartment complexes, commercial complexes and office complexes throughout Orange County. Having been previously at a, a company where we did the same thing, but nationwide, I grew really tired of travel. And so if I couldn't get to the property within 30 minutes, I didn't want to be there. And so everything, the 18 properties we've acquired in 25 years are all in Orange County and I could visit them all in a morning and be done. So I really appreciate that aspect of how we focused our efforts. The picture before you is one of the earliest properties we did. It's in 1994. It's called the Villa del Sol. It was originally the California Hotel. And I'm going to come back to this in a little bit to give you an idea of our expertise, but that's, that's one we're very, very proud of. As I said, we have properties throughout Orange County, different types. We specify, this is an apartment complex we redeveloped in Fullerton, College Palms Apartments. That again is the Villa del Sol, I'm sorry, I went the wrong way. There's the College Palms. Once we buy a property, we rehabilitate it, we then manage it and we hold on to them. We're not transient. We don't buy these to sell them and flip them and make a profit. We buy them to rehabilitate them and maintain them as part of the community and maintain the fabric and the quality of the community. This property was unique. It too is in Fullerton. It's called University Village. If there's any Titan graduates in the room, you may be familiar with it. It was the original dormitory built for Cal State Fullerton in 1972. We acquired it in 1998. It was a little bit of a different property in that it is a dormitory with a full cafeteria. I'd never done anything like that, but it was in our backyard. It was a challenge and we took it on. We re, we literally redeveloped it in the two and a half months we had vacant one summer and then repopulated it all that fall. We've owned it since 1998 and it's been very, very successful for us and the community as well. This is one of the office buildings we purchased. This is where our headquarters is currently in Fullerton. It too was a redevelopment project. Now, this goes back to the Villa del Sol. When I bought the Villa del Sol, it was in 1994. It is a, what they refer to as a URB. It's an unreinforced masonry building, brick masonry building. In 94, the state had passed a code where you had to reinforce all of these or red-tag them and tear them down. The community was mixed at that point. I loved the building and saw the potential in it and didn't want to see it torn down. So I was fortunate to step up, purchase the property, and then we went through, as you can see, a really extensive seismic retrofit. If you can see in the lower right-hand corner, that's about a seven-ton steel frame being lowered through three stories of the roof, down to the footing on the, on the basement to provide one element of the retrofit. There were three, there were the moment frames, there were strapping and sheer walls throughout the complex. This is it today. It's a vibrant meeting point in downtown Fullerton. It's literally the heart of downtown Fullerton. When we purchased the property, we had no idea of the potential, but have since learned that this particular courtyard is of real interest to people who want to have functions. So we have a special events coordinator who markets our functions in the courtyard. We have chamber functions, we have weddings, we have, we have political fundraisers, we have political launches that have taken place over the years. It's been a real hub of the community. It didn't look like this when we bought it. We are, I'm a preservationist and I really appreciate history and I appreciate architecture. And so our goal is to be as true to the original as possible. And so in doing the Villa del Sol, that's what we did as we came to all the little details. So some of you may be familiar with the property, but anyway, I wanted to bring the Villa del Sol into this because it's very much like the Bay and that is, to me, it's a historic property. The Bay is a historic property and I really appreciate those and they're, they add a, how do I say, they add a quality to the community and the fabric of the community that is lost, I think, when you bulldoze everything because you end up with a, you know, a homogenous kind of, you know, it could be here, it could be anywhere. So that said, what we would like to do with the Bay is, number one, repair it. There are some elements in it that are in disrepair. So obviously we're going to go through, we're going to repair the structure. We've been through with our engineers and our architects so far. And then secondly, restore it to a theater, to be a theater. Now, our idea of a theater is a mixed-use theater where it can show film, it can show, have live entertainment in the form of music and then also plays. The former owner, well, the current owner, whom I hope to purchase this from, I'm real escrow, it's not a doubt, but Mr. Latherhouse, he retrofitted the theater to accommodate his pipe organs, I'm sure you're all aware. There's a lot, there were about 300 seats removed from the theater to do that and so we will be in the process of dismantling what he built and trying to then with our ADA consultant, our historic consultants, engineer, architect and staff, go through and devise a plan to dismantle what's no longer needed from the pipe organ, restore the seats and accommodate ADA as best possible within the historic structure. So that will mean some changes to the front of the house, if you will, where the concessions are, because that's where the restrooms are. And so envision, we'll have to do something there to accommodate ADA compliance within the restrooms. But, and then finally, after we've repaired it, we've restored it, we intend to operate the theater and we intend to operate it so that we can be vigilant with the program. And we want it to be a vibrant part of the community, provide a cultural element for downtown that I don't currently see it on a consistent basis in the form, like I said, in the form of film, live entertainment, both play and music. Some of you may have seen, there's an article this weekend in the, in the Register and the Press Telegram that kind of went through some of our ideas and we, I've been inundated with people who like the idea and have uses that they would like to talk to me about. So I think we're going to be fielding quite a few of those inquiries and seeing what we can do to accommodate those requests as we also develop our own programming. So that said, I'm, I'm kind of going fast. I hope I'm not missing anything, but that's pretty much our plan. There we go. Next one. Now, what we need, there's three real issues that we see. The off-site parking plan. With the brokers, we've been soliciting some of the open commercial spots around town that have parking that would be available after hours. We're working on that, but we'd also like to work with the city to see what your suggestions are as well. We would like to have an onsite beer wine license for adult concert entertainment for adults when they come to a play. We think it's an integral part of the success of the theater. We don't intend to offer food or beer restaurant. We don't want to compete with the restaurants. We want to draw people into town that can enjoy the restaurants and then have a cultural element to do after or before. So our goal is strictly to have the beer wine license. And then the final thing we would like to do is restore the, the two residential components that are on the third floor. So the second and third floor. When we would, when we're done, our, our vision is that the building would be put back to as close to original as possible in today's day and age, given the fact that we want to have it a multi-function theater as well, not just for film. And so we're in the early stages of this. We've done some due diligence in terms of our engineering and the feasibility of the structure itself, but we'll be doing more in terms of the historic research to understand what the facade really did look like when it opened, see what the dimensions of the little ticket booth that are missing in the middle, where did it go? Can we get one rebuilt? Exactly what was the lighting for the marquee and how was that done? And, and trying to put all these little details together so we can then put it back together to look as much like it did and then maintain it. Now, we have a really exciting bunch of ideas that are all bubbling around for programming. And so, you know, we're really excited about the project. We hope that the city and you are supportive and can help us expedite our due diligence process through these, through these issues that we'd like to resolve. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Miller.
When I, when I read this in the paper, you know, it said before the organ was taken out, there were over 700 seats?
Yes.
My only concern for you is that the issue of parking and investing in a project before you really know where you're going to have parking because there's, there's parking that doesn't exist today. So that's, that's significant.
I understand. Absolutely. That's why I think it's number one on our list up there.
I would hope so.
Any other questions from the council?
I don't have any now. I want to hear what the public has to say.
Thank you very much. I think the city's very excited about your project and everything and feedback I've gotten from people. They're very anxious to see what, you know, your plans are and very excited that you're going to preserve it and thankful for that because this is an asset to our city and we really appreciate anything that could be done to preserve it. So thank you.
Yeah. And this is, this is something that a couple of us have just briefly discussed over the years of what could happen to that theater and it's pretty consistent with your ideas too.
I might add, this is the third time I've tried to do this over 30 years. I was one of the initial members that tried to buy the Fox Theater in Fullerton. In fact, I was one of the initial board members that started the nonprofit that currently owns the Fox Theater. I negotiated with Ed Lewis unsuccessfully to buy it from me back then. So that was 15 years ago. Three years ago, I was this close to buying the Celebrity Theater in Anaheim. I don't know if you're familiar with it?
Yeah.
But it's right there by Anaheim City Hall and was unsuccessful in doing that. But through these dry runs, we have our team together. We've put this, and it's something we've wanted to do for years. So we came, we saw this, we thought, okay, hopefully third time's a charm.
Good. We hope.
Yeah.
We hope. Okay, I think there are probably a couple of people that would like to speak this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you ask him to just stick around so he can hear the comments and?
Yes, ma'am. I think he intends to stay. You intend to stay and listen to these comments? Good. Esther.
Good evening, Esther Kenyon, Seal Beach Community Performing Arts Association. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. You will be relieved to know that you will not be forced to stand because I am not going to sing the hallelujah chorus, but I am going to say hallelujah. As you know, for the last four years, I have been a very strong advocate of seeing the Bay Theater have a renaissance and have it evolve into a performing arts center. In that regard, in 2014, as you know, I formed a nonprofit organization, the Seal Beach Community Performing Arts Association. And in that time, we have given concerts in various venues. We sponsor the Shakespeare Festival one day in August. This will be our third year. I have toured the theater with Ellery. We couldn't agree more that this can be a multi-use theater. I'm so delighted that Mr. Dunlap has the business acumen and the vision to see this happen in Seal Beach. And I would like to personally offer my personal support, my resources and also the resources of the Seal Beach Community Performing Arts Association. Together with the community and Mr. Dunlap, this will happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gosh, you dream and you wish and you just hope someone will come along. And I saw my first foreign film in 1959, going to Cal State Long Beach, first in the Montmore, and I fell in love with foreign films at the Bay. And then there was the candidacy of a particular gentleman who was running for office and he happened to be related. He was the nephew of Catherine Grayson. So Catherine Grayson came to town and the people got to see showboat like it was supposed to be on a big screen. And there were 500 people that came from Leisure World and all over the way. And I also saw, when the Bay Theater was open, I saw it was so lucky because kids got to see the Wizard of Oz on a big screen and it just doesn't play, some, some doesn't play. And then when you talk about entertainment, we used to have Bev Adams come to town, we had Hoyd Axton, we had some really terrific people. I happen to be a jazz fan, so I love K-jazz and would just love to see some of those great jazz performers come. Anyway, thank you. I just hope it all works out and as I said, I've been here a long, long time and I would be happy to assist you and credit to the performing arts too because she's done a fantastic job and it's bringing culture to town. I really, really am so excited. Thank you.
How can I get up there? Or can I help out?
Can we get her a hand mic? It's not long enough. Okay.
Thank you. And my name is Eve Tilger. I've been in town since the 60s. I'm a preservationist that goes way back and I just really admire your vision and the fact I've been to the, the Soul, whatever it is, many times in the past. And I just have a little nugget to share with you. It might be redundant, but are you acquainted with the Art Theater on Fourth Street in Long Beach? Okay, I frequent them and a couple of years ago, he and I were talking, the owner, and he said HGTV came up to me and asked if we could renovate. We had just renovated. So this might be an opportunity for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Monty Fisher. I'm an independent film producer living in Seal Beach since 2013 with my wife Mercedes. When we just moved here, the Bay Theater was closing and I had gone to the theater and tried to talk to the owner and things were just closing down and there was something was up. I was interested in having my film, which had just come out, screened in the Bay Theater for locals and wasn't able to do that and tried to find out, say to the Bay Theater Organization, find out when this was going to happen, when it would be open, because I've since then produced other films, but have nowhere to screen it for, for local audiences. You know, I have no other way except to sell DVDs to the, to the locals. And so now I see an opportunity here, finally, for the Bay Theater to be back, to be able to, if you would, rent out your theater to me so I could show them the films. Very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lots of creative people around here.
My name is Michael Bronfrenner. I've been a local resident since 1995. I'm also a local filmmaker. I also tried to have my film about one of our local residents shown in the theater and was unsuccessful. I think this is also a great opportunity for Cal State Long Beach Film Department. I do a lot of work with them. I work with, on films with them and I think there could be a great association because they show films and make films. Spielberg went to Cal State Long Beach. A lot of people don't know that, but I think this would be a great opportunity being a. My name is Gerard Roxton, and I've been in town for about four years with my wife. And so I work up in LA most of the time, and it'd be great to really have a film community down here. And I would like to offer my support and bring in some other emerging filmmakers and some people you probably have heard about and watched on TV and try to get them to come down to Seal Beach. And, you know, I have connections at the LA Film Festival Los Angeles, and I was an alumni there and stuff. So potentially even maybe down the road, we can have a film festival in Seal Beach.
Thank you. This is one of the best public hearing meetings I've ever been involved with. Everybody's happy. Anyone else want to say anything? I know you all want to say the same thing that everyone else has already said. So if you don't want to come up, that's fine. We'll move on. Mr. Dunlap, it's been a pleasure. And all the success to you. And keep in touch with the staff, work closely with them, and you know that there's support. Thank you. Councilmember Deaton would like to say something as well?
Yes, I'd like to ask if, first of all, I'd like to let the public know that now this, once we get an actual application, we don't have an application yet, but once we get an actual application, then the public process will begin. This has to go through a complete public process. Most of it will be before the Planning Commission, but I would like to request that the staff also send it to the Historical Preservation Committee and work through that committee as part of the process. I also would like to ask for an agenda item for the council to consider a change in our wine and beer ordinance or, I guess it's resolution at the moment.
It's a council policy.
Council policy that there is no beer or wine allowed within 100 feet of residence, and the council will need to take a position on that. So I would like an agenda item for that to come before the council if...
If it needs to.
It does. I have this from the attorney that I'm asking for. Does it need to?
The policy would need to be amended, yes.
If the residential units remain?
No. It's within 100 feet of residential.
Well, so are all the restaurants on Main Street.
Okay, Craig, you want to address it?
Well, there's a council policy in effect right now that states that there would be a standard condition on alcohol-related land uses, that new permits would not be allowed within 100 feet of adjacent residences. So that is a policy that staff has been imposing on applications since Jim reminded me, 19, Jim, 1993? But it is a council policy, and it's one of the impediments to this potential use. And we would have to have the council amend that policy prior to moving forward with the application.
So what I'm asking for is to put that on the agenda, bring it before the council so the council can consider making that change in the council policy for beer and wine only and for historical preservation purposes only.
Okay.
Okay, yes, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to oral communications now for all of you who have stayed that have another issue that you'd like us to think about. Come on up and let us know what it is. Rondi?
Thank you. Greetings to the city council and the mayor and staff from Leisure World. I'm Rondi Winkler, president of the Golden Rain Foundation for 36 more days.
But who's counting?
I am counting. First of all, I want to share with you that our residents are really looking forward to another event in conjunction with the city. Working with the Chamber, we, on the 21st, are going to have our city expo inside our walls. We've got a special variance on our own policies so that they will be able to sell merchandise in there. Normally, we don't allow outsiders to come in and sell anything to us. Last year, attendance at this event was about 2,000 plus. We expect at least 1,000 more people to it today. Now, I have to apologize, it's not open to the public. However, I'm sure that if you wanted to ask our mayor, Sandra Moss-Levitt, she can call you in through the gates. And if anybody here has a friend in Leisure World, they can get called in through the gates and participate. But we are really looking forward to this. Can we all call you? You can call me too. No problem. And of course, you have to come through the main gate. In addition, we understand the city, and I saw that on the agenda, has received the hydrology report on the channel on Westminster. Now, I believe we all can agree that Westminster along the Leisure World wall is not a really pretty thing. In fact, it probably looks more like a prison inside with some of the barbed wire and particularly with some of the temporary fencing we've had to put up when some of the wall went down. And that's approximately 2,900 feet of wall, which is almost, as you can see, over a half a mile. And so we've got our ducts in a row. You have the hydrology report we've sent out for the engineers and the plot side.
Surveyors.
Surveyors, so we can do that part. We, the board, our board of directors, has approved the contract. Remember, this is not at the city's expense, it's at our expense. We're talking about close to $100,000 just to remove the vegetation along that fence. I hope we have your patience because for three or four months, that place is going to be a mess. As we take down vegetation, stage it so that we get enough for tuckles that our contractor can do it. But hopefully, if all goes well, within the next three or four months, we will have a completed 10-foot wall along there. Now, the next step goes in trying, we're transferring that money to the property to the city. Hopefully, this will all go very smoothly. And with the right grants and everything, possibly within a year, year and a half, we're going to have bike paths and a pedestrian path through there. We're all looking forward to it. And for once, what I've always considered an eyesore that needed to be fixed somehow will be gone. So if everything works together, we can get this completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Rondi. Anyone else? No one else?
Patty Campbell, College Park East. Okay, about two weeks ago, I attended the Parks and Rec Commission meeting over at the North Seal Beach Community Center. A very ambitious plan for the Blue Bell Park and the tennis center was presented. And as presented, this whole plan as a unit would probably never get done according to the cost. But perhaps if it's broken down into three phases, it would ultimately be doable. And I would suggest Phase One, the restoration of Blue Bell Park. Phase Two is where they would take two to four courts off of the east side of the tennis facility and develop it into amenities for the community. And Phase Three would be the tennis center. I've submitted my comments to the website that Tim Kelsey said we should send them to. But I'd like to look at Phase One, restoration of Blue Bell Park, because that is doable now. Blue Bell had been an active park, but was downgraded to a passive park, which should never have happened. The play equipment was purposely placed in the center of the park to admit any games that could be played, such as soccer, Little League, and lacrosse. This should never have happened. We seek to restore Blue Bell Park to an active park, one where the kids can have practices and games and just run in general. And that can be done quite easily and inexpensively. One, move the play equipment over to the west side of the park along Astor Avenue, south of the basketball court. This will enable the playing field to be restored where they can have games. That a park is fenced and it has lights for evening play, and it's just a crime not to be able to use it. Two, put up a shade structure pretty close to where the original one was. It can be placed in such a way so that parents can watch the kids playing on the field and also on the play equipment, all from one spot. One of the plans called for an opening to the street on the northwest part of the park. And I would suggest that that is dangerous and should not be done because it's right near where the corner is where all the cars come around very quickly. Keep the opening halfway down. And of the cost, really, it should not be that much. I would imagine it could even be done for the $200,000. Source of the money? We have approximately $400,000 left from the $1 million that Bixby gave us. So there's money there for that. Let's get Blue Bell Park restored for the kids and their families. And by doing this into three phases and concentrating on Phase One, we can do this. And I think this can be done now. And let's worry about the rest after we get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. I share everyone's excitement about the Bay Theater. I'm not a 50-year resident, I've only been here 12 years, and I've only been to the Bay Theater once. And it was a wonderful, wonderful experience to be able to walk from our home to a theater. And I don't think many people who live in Southern California can have that experience. And that was really, really special. So I'm very excited about that. I mainly want to speak tonight to give some kudos to Pat Galagos. Pat really impressed me last week. On Tuesday, I emailed Pat at about 5:30, and the issue was that I had learned a couple of weeks beforehand that there had been a citywide distribution of the Centennial Book, I think in late December. I didn't get one. And so I had talked to some of my neighbors, I'd surveyed maybe a dozen of my neighbors, and they hadn't gotten in Bridgeport, and they hadn't gotten one either. And so I emailed this to Pat at about 5:30 on Tuesday night, and, I mean, within five or 10 minutes, he emailed me back. Very nice email, very concerned about a possible distribution problem. And long story short, as I sent him the list of my neighbors that didn't get it, he looked at that and decided that on Wednesday, he would do his own survey, a little bit broader survey, that he would survey a couple dozen of my neighbors. That was on Wednesday. And by Wednesday afternoon, he had basically confirmed that there had been some sort of distribution snafu to most of the neighborhood. And he said, you know, we'll get the books out by Thursday to your neighbors, and we're going to do a distribution to all the rest of the neighborhood the following week. I'm just very, very impressed with the service I got from him. When we were actually exchanging emails on Tuesday, his last email to me was at 7:30 in the evening. And I'm like, I told him, I said, you need to go home. What are you doing here at 7:30? And I'm just, I'm very impressed with him. I want to give him, you know, a special shout out for that, and I really appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Joyce Ross Parqueal, down Seal Beach. Hello, city council, hello taxpayers and the city workers. There aren't any secrets in this town from Joyce. So I will just start on my transparency again. Because the more I talk about transparency, the more people appreciate it. And I'll start with the flyers that were sent out in November for the election last year. And with the permission of Councilman Deaton. These flyers took your vote away for a city clerk, and they said they were going to reduce your utility taxes, but they put other things on your utility taxes. And the city manager, Mrs. Ingram, had called herself Dear Neighbor. Dear Neighbor. $66,000, and nobody knew about it until the Brown Act, 90 days after we were told here in the city council that Councilman Deaton knew about it. So now we're going to have some, someone to come and speak about the Brown Act? Is it going to be someone else other than you, the city attorney?
It'll be this evening, right after oral communications.
Oh, okay. All right. Then my other thing is the food.
Food.
You know, the food, right? I've been getting all the expenses of the food for the last two years. I think I'm going to have to go back for a couple of years. It's really sad that we have to pay for food to be delivered to you. I mean, it's here, you're all were there, but there's nothing about what you discussed. I mean, you had a Brown Act, and you had a closed session meeting tonight, but you never discussed what you were talking about to the taxpayers.
It's listed on the agenda. We don't discuss the...
Well, here is the, what is it? The bakery for over there on Long Beach that was ordered for the city council at night, 5:30, but we're paying for it to be delivered? We're paying for donuts to be delivered? And froussants? Come on. And then on top of that, we've got a $30 tip, $31 tip. You really think, Councilman Vera Papa, is this what you do with the state when you have meetings? You have meetings, and you order up all kinds of food and have it delivered? And there's nothing on there about what you talked about? Nothing. Supposed to have it. Supposed to have it. So you were all there, and $235.94, and this is like every week for the last two years. Every week. And then, I don't know why, we're ordering this up for the Los Angeles Unified, the Los Alamos Unified School District, working group meeting. Who was at the working group meeting other than the city, the Los Alamos School District? Here it goes again. It was delivered. $18.50 for a delivery fee, $30.80 for a tip, $235.97. Now, this has been happening every week for the last two years, I know. Every week for the last two years. So count it up. You're at home, someone, another taxpayer, hand down, says, why don't you just go over to the donut shop? Why don't you send somebody to the donut shop? Since when do we have to pay this much for donuts and froussants to have a meeting?
One minute.
One minute. Well, there are other meetings too. But I'm getting more and more. And the more and more taxpayers I talk to, I think that maybe they want more transparency down here on the food bills. And some of the restaurants in town, you don't even go to. You go to the ones out of the city. How is that helping small business people in this community? Tell me that. How does that help small business people in this community? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that's the end. Yeah. We're going to take a break because the Brown Act is going to take about an hour.
Why don't you send somebody to the donut shop?" Since when do we have to pay this much for donuts and froussants to have a meeting?
One minute.
One minute. Well, there are other meetings, too. But I'm getting more and more. And the more and more taxpayers I talk to, I think that maybe they want more transparency down here on the food bills, and some of the restaurants in town you don't even go to. You go to the ones out of the city. How is that helping small business people in this community? Tell me that. How does that help small business people in this community? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that's the end. Yeah. We're going to take a break, because the Brown Act is going to take about an hour. So we're going to have a break for 10 minutes. 22, we'll come back.
KJazz, 88.1. That is brand-new from Eloise Laws, and yes, that is Hubert Laws on the flute. Donald Crutt from the album, soon to be Can't Let Myself. Man, talk about on the money. Yes, indeed, it is. Just before that, Stanley Clark hanging out at the movies with Deja's theme, and again, Eloise Laws, Can't Let Myself. Man, this is a nice, nice album all the way through. I can't wait to hear the rest of it. Also got into that set of three Ray Brown Trio, How High the Moon. And one of the things she says on the album, you know, that I just thought was so simply beautiful. It was a thing that I always used when I was in Denver, it was my, my theme. "You are what has never been before, none before, none to come after, which makes you beautiful, valuable, and the person to be who you are." And that's who Eloise is. She's got something on there that says, "Because of who I am, I am valuable and beautiful." Yeah, we'll give you one on that one, absolutely. From Broadway, or from, you know, she's doing a show on Broadway, doing a show around the world, doesn't matter. She can do it all, right here on member supporter KJazz, 88.1, Jason Miles.
So let me ask you something. You ready to kick it back a little old-school, or what? No? Come on, man. Come on, Peltio, let's go a little old-school. Come on, let's go. I want to feel this from you.
I'm sorry, I just got to take that one down. It doesn't sound like it's working right. Maybe I hit one too many. Father, you didn't say that. Yes, I did. You know, sometimes I just can't help myself. What can I say? On member supporter KJazz. Okay, I'll try to do better, okay? One day. Up next, oh, this one is brand-new, on KJazz, 88.1. And it's what bebop is all about, its freedom.
We're back in order, and our city attorney, Craig Steele, will give us an overview of the Ralph M. Brown Act.
Thank you, Mayor. As I was saying before, I don't think I can be as positive and as exciting as the Bay Theater discussion, but I'll try to move this along. It is a discussion about a fairly complicated law, so I'll give you two caveats before we get going. One is that I'm not going to read sections of the statute to you. I'm sure that'll be a big disappointment. I am going to summarize what the statute says, so there's a bit of paraphrasing and summarizing that's going to go on. And I'm not going to cover every topic that could be covered in a seminar about the Brown Act. I'm going to cover the stuff that's most relevant to the Seal Beach City Council and the way we do business. There are copies, I believe, of the PowerPoint slides that are on the dais and also available for members of the public if you'd like to see them. When we do training, that's called AD 1234 Training, it's a full-on, two-hour ethics training session that state law imposed a few years ago, we're required by that statute to talk about principles of ethics, and there's a much longer discussion to be had. But I do like to cover a particular principle that's applicable to this discussion, and these principles come from the Josephson Institute of Ethics and a full set of ethical principles for public employment and public officials. And one of those principles that I think is especially apt for tonight's discussion is conduct government openly, efficiently, equitably, and honorably, so the public can make informed judgments and hold public officials accountable. What we're talking about in California with regard to the transparency laws, or the openness laws, or the sunshine laws, whatever you want to call them, we're talking about two kind of important interests. One is informing the public and letting the public make informed judgments, and the second is holding public officials accountable. And so those values you see in California played out in kind of a, what I call a three-legged stool of transparency in California, three laws. One is the Brown Act that we're going to talk about tonight. The second is the Political Reform Act, which has to deal with all of the disclosures we all make in terms of income and gifts and potential conflicts of interest. And the third is the Public Records Act. The Public Records Act is the, is the leg of the stool, if you will, that is most intensive work for staff, because those records requests come through the staff most often and doesn't impact public elected officials as often. But it's nonetheless very important and equally important in this kind of, this triangle that we have, that produces a transparency philosophy in California. The people put it right into the state constitution about, about a decade ago or so. The voters adopted this section of the California Constitution, which now says that the people have the right of access to information concerning the conduct of the people's business, and therefore the meetings of public bodies and the writings of public officials and agencies shall be opened as public scrutiny. Didn't change the law at all. None, none of what was in the initiative measure changed the law. It just emphasized a tone of government in California and made it, elevated it to be the level of a constitutional discussion to emphasize that the public have the right to open government and information within a certain structure. I've been doing this now in, in local government and city attorney work for over 25 years, and I've kind of boiled it down to three principles. One is that transparency builds public confidence, and the second that is, that goes with that is that process is important. There's that old sausage analogy, right, that when people can see how the sausage gets made, they're less likely to eat it. I think, I think this is the opposite of that, right? I think this is the, the, the exact opposite of the sausage analogy. I think when people can see how decisions get made, and they know that they're made according to a certain process, even if they disagree with the decision, they have a higher level of confidence in the decision itself, and they have a higher level of confidence in the decision-makers. Where, where public trust and confidence start to break down is where people don't understand what the process was, or that a process was followed, or that they haven't seen that a process was followed. So I think those two principles go together. And the third one is a disagreement that I had for a long time with a, with a mayor in another city who always followed the old, I think it was a P.T. Barnum, saying that there's no such thing as bad publicity as long as they spell the name right. And, and I disagree with that. There is, there is such a thing as bad publicity, and, and what often happens in Brown Act cases is that the bad publicity that arises out of an allegation that the Brown Act has been violated is often based on incomplete facts or one side of the facts, and that creates bad publicity, bad newspaper articles, coverage that's not complete or not fully informed. But it also starts to create a narrative, and, and it creates an impression because people only hear... or one side of the facts, and that creates bad publicity, bad newspaper articles, coverage that's not complete or not fully informed. But it also starts to create a narrative, and it creates an impression because people only hear one side of the story. And so there is such a thing as bad publicity, because uninformed publicity or negative publicity creates a perception that tends to build on itself. So when you look at all three of these principles together, I think that what we're really talking about is a culture of openness, and that's really important. It's not just an attitude of legal compliance, it's a culture of openness and a culture of accessibility that becomes important in public agencies. It's easy to let a culture that is dedicated to openness kind of fade a little bit. It's easy to get wrapped up in the complications of government. It's easy to get wrapped up in all of the meetings that we all go to, and the acronyms, and the account numbers, and all of those things that make the business we do a little bit more dense. But it's important to remember that accessibility and openness as a kind of organizational value is a good This is the least famous of the numerous Browns who have served in important positions in California government. This is Senator Ralph Brown. He's not related to Governor Pat or Governor Jerry, but he's the guy who wrote the Brown Act back in the 1950s. He was a state senator from up the road in Gardena, and so a lot of people think that the Brown Act came to us from either Pat or Jerry, and it did not. It came to us from Senator Ralph. And the meat of the Brown Act is this section, Government Code Section 54953A. It says, "All meetings of the legislative body of a local agency shall be open and public. All persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of a legislative body of a local agency except as otherwise provided in this chapter." And like a lot of things that are written by lawyers, there's a whole lot of stuff wrapped up into this one section. And so the purpose of my presentation is to try to break down the key elements of this section and make sure we're all on the same page in terms of what those elements say, and also importantly, what they don't say. Because I think people sometimes have an expectation that the law says more than it does, or means more than it does, and so I want to make sure that we're all operating under the same view of the different pieces of this section. So if you look at it, there are a number of important elements. Meetings, legislative body, open and public, persons permitted to attend, except as otherwise provided in the chapter. So what I want to talk about in this presentation is to what bodies does the Brown Act apply? What is a meeting that's covered by the Brown Act? What rules apply to those meetings? How do we remedy a violation of those rules? And what can we do in applicable cases to go beyond the minimum? What can we do to even go beyond what the Act requires? So first of all, let's talk about what a legislative body. Well, we're a legislative body. That's the most basic definition in the Brown Act. The governing body of the agency that's covered. So it's the city council, it's the county board of supervisors, it's the board of directors of the water agency, or the transportation authority, or the school board, any agency that is covered by the Brown Act, which is all local public agencies. The legislative body that runs that entity is definitely covered by the Brown Act. Note that we're not talking about state agencies here. There's an entirely different set of laws that apply to, for example, the Coastal Commission, or other state bodies. There's a whole different set of open government laws. What we're talking about here apply to local bodies like the city council. In addition to the governing body, the Brown Act also applies to subordinate bodies, boards and commissions, that are created by formal action of this body. So in Seal Beach's case, we're talking about the Planning Commission. We're talking about the EQCB. We're talking about the Parks and Rec Commission. Those bodies that are created by formal action, they show up in the municipal code as a decision-making body or an advisory body of the city, also are covered by the Brown Act's meeting requirements and agenda requirements. There are also some things in some cities called standing committees, where I guess here we have an audit committee. Other cities have a number of different, the personnel committee, the real estate committee, the traffic safety committee. There are formal committees that have ongoing jurisdiction, regular meeting schedules. Those bodies are also covered by the Brown Act, if they are established formally and have a regular meeting schedule and a regular subject matter jurisdiction. That's to obviously avoid the situation where a city council could, for example, say, well, we'll get around the Brown Act by setting up a bunch of two-member committees and have items discussed in that smaller, closed format instead of having a full discussion in an open and public setting. However, there are a lot of other kinds of bodies that are not covered by the Brown Act, and they are not defined as a legislative body. Advisory committees, committees who set up on an ad hoc basis for a limited purpose, even if members of the city council, less than a quorum, are appointed, are not covered by the Brown Act, not considered to be legislative bodies. So if we set up an ad hoc beach cleanup committee with two members of the city council to meet with staff and talk about ways to clean up the beach, and it was just for that limited purpose, limited time, wasn't going to have an ongoing kind of jurisdiction, that ad hoc committee would not be covered by the Brown Act. It would not have to meet in a public agendized setting. Now, that's the minimum. There are often reasons why you have an ad hoc committee. Go out and meet with the public, because you want that ad hoc committee to take public input. I'm just saying it's not required. So now that we know what is considered to be a legislative body covered by the Brown Act, the next thing we talk about is what is considered a meeting. And this is one of those situations, as we go through the next few slides, where we're going to talk about what the law says and also what it doesn't say. What is a meeting? What's not a meeting? Because that's the source of some confusion. First of all, a meeting to be legally covered by the Brown Act has to include all of these elements, okay? Congregation of a majority of the legislative body, in this case, it would be three members of the city council, at the same time and place, to hear, discuss, or deliberate any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of that body. So, again, congregation, majority is three, same time and place, I'll discuss a little bit more in a minute. But the third one is the one that trips a lot of people up. A lot of folks think that the Brown Act really only covers voting, right, and that the only thing that has to happen in public is the vote. But people can talk about things outside of a public meeting and not really implicate the Brown Act. That's not true. The statute says specifically that a meeting includes hearing, discussing, or deliberating on any item when there's a congregation of a majority in the same time and place, and it's when it's within the subject matter jurisdiction. And here's one of those places where there's stuff that people think is in the law, but it's not really in the law. The five of you could all go to coffee tonight after this meeting and talk about the weather. There's nothing the city of Seal Beach can do about the weather. That's not a Brown Act violation. You could go talk about the results of the baseball game. You could talk about what your kids and your grandchildren are doing. That's not a violation of the Brown Act. Unfortunately, I think people in the public who are not in a government situation assume that any time the five of you get together, or any time two or three of you get together, you're talking about city stuff, and that you don't have lives outside of the city council, and you don't have a relationship outside of the city council, and so therefore if they see you together, you must be talking about city stuff. And that's a really difficult perception to overcome, because as we all know, when we're just sort of around City Hall, we're talking about a lot of different stuff. And we know what's happening with family members. We know what's happening with travel plans and different things that normal people talk about. So I think people in the public have to get comfortable with the idea that any congregation of the city council is not necessarily a violation of the Brown Act, because you know what I was talking about? City stuff. But if there is a congregation of the majority of the city council to talk about city stuff, it is covered by the Brown Act. One way that happens, even if people aren't actually in the same room together, is what's called an illegal serial meeting. And this is a way that sometimes public officials inadvertently, for the most part, can violate the Brown Act. And it comes out of opinions of the Attorney General and sort of actual fact patterns is the way this has been defined. And it's a case where there's a direct or indirect communication employed by a majority of the legislative body to develop a collective concurrence as to action to be taken. So an example of that would be what's called a hub and spoke, where a member of staff goes and talks to one member of the city council and says, hey, here's an item that's coming forward, and we're recommending this course of action, and we hope that the city council will support it. And that council member says, yeah, that sounds pretty good to me. I'm in favor of that. And so that staff person then goes to the next council member and says, this is what we're proposing, and this is what staff's recommendation is, and I talked to council member A, and they're in favor of it. What do you think? And that council member says, well, if A's in favor of it, I think I'm good. Yeah, I'm in favor of that, too. And then go to the third council member and say, this is what staff's recommending. This is the item before you. I've talked to A and B, and they're good with this. What do you think? And the minute A and B's opinion is on the issue is transmitted to C, whether it's intentional or inadvertent, that's called a serial meeting, because an intermediary has been used to transmit that information from one council member to another, and now we've reached the majority of a five-member council. I think people are generally in this day and age, after enough of these trainings, in my experience, that's something that explicit doesn't happen very often. If it happens, it's more inadvertent. The way it does tend to happen, and again, it is inadvertent, because I've seen it happen in this case, is through an email chain. We all know how this works. There's an issue on the city council agenda, and an email goes out, come on down and talk about the repairs to the pier. The city council's going to talk about different ways to work on the pier. Come on down and tell them what you think. And there's 150 names on that list. And one person in the public hits reply to all and says, I hear that the city council is going to put a Ferris wheel at the end of the pier, and we should come down and march on City Hall and tell them we don't want to be Santa Monica, and we're not going to have a Ferris wheel at the end of the pier. And a well-meaning council member sees that and says, I got to correct this. And so they type up an IC email that says, there's not going to be any Ferris wheel at the end of the pier. We're not trying to turn this into the Santa Monica Pier. Nothing like that is being proposed. And then they do that thing that city attorneys everywhere wish never occurred, which is they hit that button that says, reply all. And when you reply all, you reply to 150 people, which may include all of your city council colleagues. And then somebody gets that and says, aha, look, this email chain has been a Brown Act violation because all members of the city council heard what council member A's opinion on the issue is. Inadvertent? Does it happen? Yeah, it happens. And so the way to guard against that is to never hit reply all, and never reply to your colleagues, or any situation where it could go to your colleagues, even if they're part of a broader email list, in a way that does that. Okay?
So I have a question. So what you have is you have four members of the city council who knows what member A thinks. That's a violation of the Brown Act, or is it when council member B answers that and says, well, no, I was actually thinking maybe we will put a Ferris wheel at the end of it?
No, it's possible for somebody to argue that either one of them is a violation, because on the first one, all the members of the city council are included. So there's a back-and-forth between one member and the other four. So it's possible to argue that that initial one is the first violation. It's possible to argue that it needs another. But the conservative approach is to just not hit reply all, and not get involved in those discussions that might include your colleagues, because you don't want to even give somebody the argument that that's sitting out there.
Well, I think that the important point is, though, that some of these things are actually a violation, and others are what you might want to call sunshine measures that you want to go above and beyond what the law says. And I have no problem going above and beyond what the law is, but I want to be very clear about what the law is and not just what we think it should be.
Excuse me. I agree completely with you, and part of what I'm trying to do here is go above and beyond and advise you how to stay out of those situations where somebody could even infer that the law is being violated. Yeah.
I have a quick question. If you get a BCC emailed from a council member, and I don't reply all, or...
I think it's the reply that becomes the problem.
So the problem is not the fact that four members know what one member is thinking. The problem is replying to that.
It's the back-and-forth that becomes the problem. And that also follows with the next item on the list, which is that individual briefings are permitted. One-way communication is permitted. So if Joe is going to have a conversation, for example, with each member of the city council, in person or by email, that individual one-way briefing is permitted, and there's a specific section of the Brown Act that permits that. What she can't do is what we talked about earlier, which is be that hub and spoke and take information that she gets from one council member and pass it on to the next, and pass it on to the next. Staff often send out emails, for example, that go one way, and they might include all members of the city council. That's fine. That's a one-way briefing. Remember, the public can do that without violating the Brown Act. That first communication is fine. It's the interchange that becomes the problem. Now, there are a whole lot of things that might look like a meeting, and might seem like a meeting, but they're specifically excluded from the definition of meeting under the Brown Act. The first is individual contacts with staff, as we just talked about, that one-way kind of communication, or with constituents, even if a constituent happens to talk to more people, more members of the council than just one. Those individual contacts are not considered to be meetings under the Brown Act, even if that constituent talks to more than one person. When it becomes a problem is when the constituent says, well, I've talked to this member and that member, and again, starts to become that intermediary. That's when we advise council members to politely disengage from that constituent contact and say, look, the law doesn't allow me to talk to you about that information, and try to change the subject. But the one-to-one communications, somebody coming up to you in the grocery store, or in the coffee house, or whatever, is certainly permitted and not considered to be covered by the Brown Act. All members of the council, or a majority, can attend a conference or a seminar that's also open to other people, like a League Conference, or a SCAG Conference, or all of the various things that you all go to, as long as it's not essentially just a subterfuge to avoid the Brown Act. You don't sit up in the corner of the meeting room and hold the secret meeting while you're attending the League Conference. Same thing with community meetings, the homeowners association board of directors, the Little League opening day, all of those community ceremonial functions that are open to even an invited list, but generally the public, as long as they're not used as a means of violating the Brown Act, are not considered to be meetings. You can attend, but not necessarily participate in a meeting of another body of this agency. A council member can attend the Planning Commission meeting, for example, as long as that other meeting is open and public and everybody can see you sitting there. And as I said before, off-topic conversations, things that aren't about city business, obviously are not covered by the Brown Act.
Great.
Yes, sir.
The seminars say that three people go to that, three council people. You'd have
Yeah, it takes a certain amount of discipline, and again, sort of this culture of respecting the Brown Act and the transparency laws to say, okay, we're not going to talk about whatever, you know, the application that's coming up at our next council meeting. I always, when I'm at one of those conferences with clients, you know, I always encourage everybody to start talking about their kids, and the weather, and the Dodgers, and whatever else, because it's just easier to have a conversation started about something other than city business. And frankly, I find that city people don't want to talk about city business once you can get them started talking about something else. But it does require a certain amount of discipline in those circumstances.
Craig, on the same vein, you're at a conference, you get presented with a great idea, and there are three of you there. Can you talk about that idea?
No, I would suggest that you bring that idea back to the city council at that point and have that conversation. I'll bring it to staff, and staff can then agendize that idea for discussion at a city council meeting. What often happens after those conferences, as you know, is people come back and download on the city manager or on staff and say, like, I got 17 things that...
That have to happen next week.
Right, and that's the way you avoid having too many offline discussions about what turns into be city business. The rules regarding those collective meetings of members of the legislative body that are defined as meetings, there are four types of meetings. Regular meetings, that's what we're having right now. We're at the regular meeting of the city council. A special meeting, I'll talk about in a minute, an adjourned meeting, and an emergency meeting. For a regular meeting, as everybody knows, the agenda must be posted 72 hours in advance. Each agenda must contain a brief discussion of the items of business that are intended to be transacted at that meeting, and the posted agenda must be freely accessible to public, and in a recent change to the statute a couple of years ago, now available on the website, if the public agency has a website. A special meeting is one that can be called by the presiding officer or a majority of the council commission on 24 hours' notice, not 72. A written notice must be received, not sent, but received, by each member 24 hours in advance, along with members of the press who've requested those notices. The difference is that at a regular meeting, a city council can do pretty much everything that's within its power to do, as long as that item appears on the agenda. At a special meeting, you can only consider exactly what appears on the agenda, and there are a whole bunch of things that you can normally do at a regular meeting that you can't do at a special meeting. So, for example, you can't adopt an ordinance at a special meeting. You can adopt an ordinance at a regular meeting, the law says you can't adopt anyone at a special meeting. So you can only do what the law allows you to do at a special meeting, and you can only do exactly what's on the agenda. An adjourned meeting is one where, if we just get to, I drummed on here for a while, and the city council says, we're all falling asleep, and we don't want to be here anymore, but we've still got business to transact, you could adjourn this meeting to tomorrow at noon, or next Monday night at 7:00 PM, or some other time and place. And that would continue to be this meeting for all intents and purposes, even though it's not taking place on your regular meeting night. A lot of public agencies do this a lot, because they just have so much stuff coming on their agendas. It doesn't happen in my brief experience here very often, except that we will often adjourn at the end of the regular city council meeting to 5:30 at the next regular city council meeting date, in case we have to have a closed session. That's a fairly common occurrence here, and completely permissible under the Brown Act. If you adjourn a meeting to a date within five days, all the clerk has to do is just go post a notice on the door that says, the meeting's been continued for four or five days, whatever the date is and the time, and we use the same agenda that we were using tonight. If we adjourn it to a week from now, we'd have to post a new agenda within 72 hours and start that whole cycle again. It's really a tool to be used when there's just too much on the agenda to get done in one session, and we want to come back tomorrow and finish it up, or come back in a couple of days. Also, sometimes we find that a forequorum of the city council isn't available to attend a regular city council meeting. And so, less than a quorum of you can take action to adjourn it to tomorrow, or next Monday, or whatever the date is. Also, the city clerk can do that, and occasionally, we've done that here, the city clerk would just post a notice of adjournment. Whether it's a regular or special meeting, there are rules as to the location. It's got to occur within the local jurisdiction, so any meeting, excuse me, of the city council, including retreats and workshops, have to, has to take place within the city of Seal Beach, unless you're participating in a multi-agency type of meeting. For example, we're going to meet with the school board, and we want to meet outside the city, meet in Los Alamitos or somewhere else for that meeting. You're permitted to meet outside the city for that limited purpose. You're also permitted to meet outside the city to attend legal proceedings, or to inspect real property you're considering buying, and that's not going to happen here, or if, for some reason, in an emergency situation, your regular meeting place is unsafe to attend. So there are a few exceptions. I have had city council meetings that have taken place in a federal courthouse in downtown Los Angeles, for example, in a settlement conference, kind of a situation. We've actually moved the meeting of the city council down to a federal court, because the judge demanded that all the city council members attend the settlement conference to get the thing done. So those kinds of exceptions are rare, but they're permitted under the law. I've been a city attorney for 24 years, and I've never seen an emergency meeting, thank goodness. But an emergency meeting is permitted under the Brown Act, under very, very, very limited circumstances, real emergencies, health and safety, kind of mass destruction, or mass casualty kind of events. An emergency meeting can be called on one hour's notice, and that one-hour notice has to be provided to the press, and the press has to be permitted to attend. A closed session can be held in an emergency meeting situation, but there has to be a two-thirds vote to go into closed session. So it's a very, it's almost impossibly rare situation, but it is there in the law. With regard to what has to be on the agenda, as we said, it's got to be publicly accessible, online, distributed in advance, and you can't discuss, hear, or deliberate items that don't show up on the posted agenda, with a couple of exceptions that I'll talk about. One exception is to make a brief response to comments. Somebody comes up at the podium and says, hey, there's a pothole in front of my house. What do I do about it? It's okay for the mayor to say bug Michael Ho about it, and he'll get that pothole filled, right? You can make that kind of brief response. You don't have to say, well, we'll put this on an agenda in two weeks, we'll tell you how to get your pothole filled. That's an obvious kind of accommodation to the public. You can also make a clarification or a reference to staff. Somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to get the history teacher fired at the high school. Well, it's okay to say, we don't hire and fire teachers here, this isn't the school board, this is the city council. Go over to the school headquarters or contact this number. It's okay to make that kind of clarification or reference. It's okay for members of the body to make brief announcements, we do that here, or make a report on activities, if you went to a ribbon cutting, or you went to a conference and you want to let your colleagues know about that. It's okay to have that discussion, even if it's not appearing on the posted agenda. It is okay to ask staff for a future report or agenda item, as we just had this evening. The Brown Act permits council members to ask for something to be placed on a future agenda, and every council kind of has their own different procedure for how that happens, whether you have to get the concurrence of somebody else, or you can just do it individually. But in either case, we don't have to have another meeting to decide whether we're going to talk about something at another meeting. It's okay for a council member just briefly to say, I'd like to talk about this item, can it be on the next agenda? There are limited circumstances where an item can be added to the agenda. But I would emphasize the word limited. My philosophy on this issue is to be very conservative about adding items to the agenda. I know that other cities are a little more loose about this issue, but there are two findings that council members have to make before we can add something to an agenda that doesn't appear on your agenda. And that's that the item came to the agency's attention after the agenda was posted, and that there's a need to take action before the next meeting. Two important items. And when we say came to the agency's attention, that doesn't mean that it's been sitting on a staff's desk for three weeks, and we got the staff report finished after the agenda was posted. It means that the letter came in the mail after the agenda was made, or there was an emergency situation that came up after the agenda was posted. It's legitimately something that came to our attention after the agenda was posted, and there's legitimate need to take action prior to the next meeting. And if both of those criteria are met, the council has to vote with a two-thirds vote, or in this case, four-fifths, to add something to the agenda, making those specific findings, and then it's like it appeared on the posted agenda. Once you've voted to add it, and you've met those requirements, you can discuss it and deliberate on it and make the decision, just like it appeared 72 hours in advance. And I think y'all know that agendas and packets have to be publicly accessible. There's a public copy of the agenda that's made available, and additionally, it's made available on the website. Writings that are distributed to a majority of the legislative body, for the most part, become public records. So, for example, my PowerPoint slides that were on the dais before you this evening have become public records, and members of the public can receive those, ask for them, look at them. There are a few exemptions to that, such as an attorney-client privileged memo, but I probably wouldn't be handing that out to you in an open session, anyway. But when something goes to the city council, for the most part, it becomes a document that's available to members of the public, if it's gone to the city council as part of an open and public meeting. There's a process by which people can sign up to receive copies of the agenda, and they're entitled to receive copies of the agenda at the same time the city council copies go out. The legislative body is allowed to adopt a fee to pay for the copying charges, or kind of a subscription fee, if you will, for people who want hard copies. In terms of public participation at meetings, we have a, I think we could say, a robust tradition of public participation here in Seal Beach, and so let's talk real quick about what the rules are for public participation. One is that members of the public have an absolute right to speak on any item of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city at regular meetings. So people, as you know, can stand up and talk about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda, as long as they're within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city during that public comment period. There are all kinds of cases from throughout the last 30 or 40 years of people who wanted to talk about things that aren't in the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. There were some famous cases about people who wanted to talk about ending the Vietnam War at the Los Angeles and Berkeley city council meetings. And those discussions weren't allowed, because the Los Angeles and Berkeley city councils didn't have anything to do with ending the Vietnam War. So there are all kinds of cases about that. But generally, if people want to talk about something that's within the city's bailiwick, they're allowed to do so at a regular meeting. At a special meeting, and remember, we talked about those are the ones on 24 hours' notice, at a special meeting, the public's entitled to comment only on the item that's on the agenda. And that's because, as I said, at a special meeting, you can't do anything else other than what's on the agenda. So when we have a special meeting, like, for example, tonight, we had one closed session before the regular city council meeting, folks came in to speak, they're only entitled to speak on those two items that were actually on the agenda, and everything else that they want to talk about about the city has to be done in here at your regular meeting. Y'all should know that the law specifically says public agencies cannot prohibit public criticism of policies, procedures, programs of the city, or acts of the city council. That's in the Brown Act, as well as, I think, kind of a basic time-honored constitutional tradition. There is a section of the Civil Code, Civil Code Section 47, that talks about how statements made at a meeting like this are privileged. And that means that you can't be sued for statements that are made at a meeting, a public meeting like this. Statements made from that dais, from this microphone, from this dais. Everybody who talks at a public meeting has a right to say what they say without fear of being sued. There's this law school theory that we all learn our first year of law school, it's called the marketplace of ideas. And it's basically this theory that says, you go into a public meeting, you throw your ideas out there, and you shouldn't be afraid of getting punished for your ideas, because the marketplace will throw out the bad ones and keep the good ones. I'm not always sure that that actually works in practice, but having sat through a lot of these meetings, but that's the theory, and that's the reason that Civil Code Section 47 exists and protects those statements. If somebody were to step outside the meeting and be talking to a member of the press, or be talking to just a group of folks in the public, and say something libelous or slanderous... I'll give you an example. I was once, at a meeting of another city council, accused of being engaged in a criminal conspiracy with the mayor, to steer business to a particular contractor. And it was a silly and absurd charge, but it was made from the podium. And it was made by a person who had stood in the secretary's office earlier in the day, and said, you watch what I do at the meeting tonight, I'm going to stir some things up, and I don't really care if it's true or not. And he stood up at the podium, and he accused me, and the mayor of the city, of, hey, if you get a criminal conspiracy, and said, we ought to be prosecuted for these crimes. Normally, you'd say, somebody stands up and falsely accuses you of a crime, you ought to have some remedy for that. But in fact, because of Civil Code Section 47, a person can stand at that podium, or at this microphone, and say something like that, and not be sued for it. If that person was to go out and say it in a crowd of people outside, in the courtyard out there, that statement is not privileged, and that statement could be the basis of a libel or slander action. It's, again, a point of this intent, that there'd be this kind of free marketplace of ideas, as long as we're in the wall of this room. But once we get out, the normal rules of society start to apply again. Other rules regarding public participation, folks who want to participate in the public cannot be required to register. Brown Act says you can use things like sign-up sheets or cards, as long as they're optional, to help organize a meeting, but you can't require somebody to sign a card, give you their phone number, their email address, as a prerequisite to participating in the meeting. There's a certain right to anonymous speech, if people want to speak anonymously and not identify themselves in here, they have a right to do so. Numerous court decisions have held that the basic rules of decorum are permitted. There's a case called White versus City of Norwalk, which was a real important case that laid out the kinds of rules a federal court would allow a city to constitutionally impose. Those are things like time limits for public speakers. Those are things like requiring people who are speaking to speak to the mayor, instead of turning around and rattling up the crowd. Those are things like requiring people to speak on the subject at hand, or only speak when recognized by the chair. Come to a microphone rather than sitting in the audience and yelling whenever you want. Basic things that help the public agency get its business done, but still do so in a way that protects the individual's right to participate in the meeting. You've got to kind of play by the rules, but if you play by the rules, you have the right to say what you want to say within those rules. So as I say, time limits are specifically permitted by court decisions, and agencies have time limits ranging from like one minute, if you go to the LA City Council, or the Board of Supervisors in Los Angeles, where a couple hundred people might want to speak every day, to three minutes, or five minutes, or 10 minutes, whatever the custom and the practice of the agency... practice of the agency is. As long as it's reasonable and allows people the right to participate, those limits are really up to the discretion of the city council. If people want to record a meeting, not just the official recording, but if they want to bring in their own camera, their own tape recorder, they're absolutely permitted to do so and we can't prohibit that. I used to work in the city of Hesperia, which was at the time kind of the wild, wild west out there, and there was a lot of crazy stuff would happen at the city council meetings. And one was that a particular member of the public would record himself speaking during public comment. And he would come in before the meeting and he'd set up a video camera right there in the space between Mike and the podium, direct it at the podium. And he'd turn it on, he'd sit in the front row, and when it came time to be public comment, he'd get up and start yelling and waving his arms and making a big scene and disrupting the meeting. And after a series of warnings, the mayor would have to ask the police department to have the man removed from the room because he was disrupting the meeting. And he would wave his arms and make a big speech about how he was being constitutionally arrested and his arm hurt and all these things. And then after he was removed, his girlfriend would come up and pick up the camera and take it out of the room. And so this guy had his own kind of road crew and he recorded every time he disrupted a meeting. Never did anything about it, but had a library of recordings that's absolutely permitted by the Brown Act and has to be allowed. Another thing that's allowed but doesn't happen very often is teleconferencing. As long as a quorum of this body is participating in a meeting at the regular location, one of you could teleconference from a remote location, even if that remote location is outside the city. So sometimes people are away on a particular trip or something and just can't make a meeting. It is legally permissible for one of you to participate by teleconference. The rules are really complicated and the participation has to be somewhere that's accessible to the public. So I once had a council member participate from a hotel room in Delaware at a council meeting in downtown Los Angeles, and he had to have the hotel post the agenda in the front window of the hotel as well as on the door of his hotel room. And he had to leave the door of his hotel room open at some ungodly hour in Delaware so he could participate in this council meeting by telephone. But that is allowed by the law and does it happen occasionally. Finally, let's talk about closed sessions for a minute because that has been a matter of some interest and is always one of those situations where it's important to know what the law says and what the law doesn't say. There are a number of instances in the Brown Act where legislative bodies are permitted to meet in closed session. These are the most, the first four bullet points are the most applicable closed session topics that pertain to the city of Seal Beach. There are a whole bunch of other closed session topics allowed by the Brown Act. I think there are 13 or 15 or something like that. Most of them don't ever really happen in the life of a city like this one, so I'm not going to spend any time talking about them, but I don't want anybody to say that I didn't talk about everything or that this is the only list because there's a long list and it might be a case at some point in the future that one of those other topics becomes applicable here. But the most often discussed subjects are personnel matters or labor negotiations, real property matters, pending or threatened or contemplated litigation, or threats to public facilities. And taking each one of those kind of in turn, personnel matters include the hiring, firing, discipline, release of individual employees that are actually employed by the city council. So in most cases, unless the personnel rules provide otherwise, a city council doesn't have a closed session to discuss a disciplinary action against a secretary because the city council is not the disciplining body for that secretary. That's a decision that depending on the personnel rules is made by the HR director or the city manager or something like that. But you might have a disciplinary action against a city manager or against a city attorney because we work directly for the city council. That would be the kind of personnel matter you could hold in closed session. Also, hiring, contract negotiations, those kinds of things are perfectly allowed in closed session as long as they're identified on the agenda. And so on the agenda, you identify the section of the government code that permits the act as well as the permission that's involved. With regard to labor negotiations with recognized employee groups, as you'll see on this evening's agenda, there was a closed session for a conference with labor negotiator and it lists the labor negotiators themselves, the people who are going to be negotiating on your behalf, as well as the employee organizations that we're talking about. And if you think about it, it really makes sense. If you put it in terms of your own personal business, if you were running a business and you were hiring somebody to negotiate with your employees who were members of a bargaining group, you wouldn't hold that discussion with the person who was going to negotiate the contract in a setting like this because you're going to say to your negotiator, "Look, we'll give this, but our maximum amount that we're going to agree to is this and you have discretion to work within," or "We'll give in on this, but we won't give in on that." You're not going to reveal your bargaining position to the group you're bargaining against by holding a meeting out in the open. You wouldn't be required to do that in your private business. You're not required to do that in your public business. And that's because the Brown Act respects the fact that the public interest sometimes requires that not everybody hear the discussion that's going on in a closed session. We do, however, put it on the agenda and we talk about the groups that are being negotiated with and give that information so that if people want to come and give their opinion about what ought to be in a contract with any of these groups, they're perfectly willing, are perfectly able to come and give that kind of input. The same is true with regard to real property matters. You're not going to negotiate with your own personal real estate agent and say, "Make a counter offer at $100,000, but if I can get it for $125,000, I'll go for it." You're not going to make that, have that kind of discussion publicly with your own personal real estate agent because then the other side knows that the price is $125,000. Similarly, the city is not required to reveal its negotiating strategies in a real property transaction publicly because that would result in the city being prejudiced at the negotiating table. So the Brown Act allows for you to go in a closed session on real property negotiations and talk about price and terms of payment. Okay? And I think it's important to note that those are the two things that we're permitted to talk about, price and terms of payment. Now, sometimes terms of payment include an overall deal that has to be made when you're talking about a real property transaction, but it all has to be, if it's going to be discussed in closed session, has to fit within that context of price and terms of payment. The next category is pending or threatened or contemplated litigation. Pending litigation is obvious. It's a case that's been filed, there's a case number, there's a case name, you can say where the court is, you list that item on the agenda and you have the right to meet with your lawyer privately and have a discussion about litigation strategy or anything else related to that piece of litigation as long as it's identified on the agenda. Threatened litigation is a little bit different. Threatened litigation is litigation that you're aware of a threat. Either it's been made specifically or you're aware of circumstances that could turn into litigation. That's a threatened litigation that the Brown Act permits you to meet in closed session. Sometimes those threats of litigation are required to be disclosed. If somebody stands up in a city council meeting and says, "I'm going to sue you because..." and that's a specific threat of litigation, if we then go to have a closed session about that, we're going to disclose what the threat was. If it's a threat that we know about, but we think the other side doesn't know about, then we're not required to disclose those facts and circumstances because the law is trying to encourage us to come up with a strategy, to come up with a way of avoiding a litigation without actually letting the other side know that you have that problem. So there's been a question here about level of disclosure and what was disclosed and what wasn't disclosed. The law specifically allows agencies, when they know something that might result in litigation, but they think it's not known to the other side, the law specifically allows the agency not to disclose that publicly. Why? Because if you know that something's happened on your property, there's a leak of toxic chemicals from your property and it might be going over to your neighbor's property and you don't think your neighbor knows about it, you're not required to tell your neighbor about it before you really know what the facts are. You can have a discussion about the facts before you say publicly, "Hey, there's a leak of stuff on our property." The law encourages you to clean up messes before they become bigger messes by going to litigation.
Question?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's talk a minute about pending, threatened, and contemplated litigation because sometimes they might be threaded together and what the amount of reporting out afterward has to be done and what should be done and maybe what goes beyond what should be done or has to be done. If you come up with a strategy, for instance, clean it up before it goes to your neighbor's property, does that then need to be, does the strategy itself need to be reported out?
No. There's nothing in the Brown Act that requires the public agency to reveal its strategy in either actual litigation or potential litigation. There's nothing in the Brown Act that specifically requires us to disclose, for example, that we hire a consultant or we hire outside counsel or we hire somebody to help us avoid litigation. There's a specific list of things that have to be disclosed. Among those are actually deciding to initiate litigation or deciding to seek, to appeal a case or deciding to settle a case. But other things that happen kind of in the course of litigation, you give your lawyer the authority to hire an appraiser to figure out what a piece of property is worth, you're not required to make that disclosure at the end of each closed session where those things are disclosed or discussed because that could reveal the agency's strategy and it could prejudice the agency as it goes forward. That doesn't mean that the contract, for example, is always a confidential document. It doesn't mean that there's not any way that that information gets disclosed. I'm only talking about what the Brown Act requires to be announced either going into or coming out of a closed session meeting. And there are certainly instances where we decide to disclose more than what is required by the Brown Act. I think, for example, the information that's on the agenda tonight about the litigation matter is probably more than we had to disclose if you read the Act literally, but we're having a discussion about an event that happened very publicly and everybody in town seems to know that it happened and there's no real, there's no real secret about what happened. So there's no reason to, no advantage or no benefit to the city to keep in that discussion confidential. So we put the facts on the agenda and we'll announce later what the decision of the city council was. So there's opportunities to go further and I'm going to talk about that in a minute. But in terms of what has to be disclosed, the list is very limited and it's kind of a list of final actions that have to be disclosed because the Brown Act simply doesn't require us to let everybody know what our litigation or pre-litigation strategy is, what kind of expert witnesses we're hiring, those kinds of things, because that could prove to be an advantage to an actual opponent or to a potential litigant.
Okay, thank you.
So contemplated litigation is, just to finish up this thought, is that situation where we have one, as I said, on the agenda tonight, where we're going to ask the city council to think about whether, and to discuss whether to initiate litigation. It's also where we think there's a situation that might result in litigation against us and we need to make the city council aware of those facts without necessarily disclosing them to the other side.
So where does that get reported out then?
Well, in some cases, it doesn't get reported out at all. If it's just a discussion and the city council doesn't make a decision that's required to be reported by the Brown Act, merely give direction to staff, that's one of those situations where I say the city council took no reportable action. Everything that happens in closed session, as I said before, it doesn't always get reported. It's not always required to be reported and it doesn't always get discussed.
But when you report out, you report it out here in open session.
Oh, I'm sorry, misunderstood the question. Yeah, well, what the Brown Act says is you do it at the end of the session and I could, I think practically do it in the conference room where we usually hold our closed sessions because that's a separate meeting. A practice that I've tried to adopt since I've been here is to make that announcement in here because I think if it's an announcement of any importance, we're saying what we're going to do, I think it's important to have that heard in a broader or open setting. And even if the announcement is we took no reportable action, I think people just are more likely to hear about it if it's taken here. It's not actually required to be done here and could be done over there at the end of the actual closed session, but my practice has been to do it, do it in here just to give it a little more notice.
I appreciate that. I think that is more transparent, which I hope we're going to get to a definition of what transparent is because I don't see that it's measurable in any way except by what the Brown Act requires and then what we choose to go beyond it, for instance, reporting out here publicly on TV and in front of the folks.
Okay, so we've kind of covered the next couple of slides and I'll just skip to this one. There's often a question about who's entitled to participate in a closed session. Sometimes people want to bring, you know, the other party in a lawsuit or a potential buyer to a property into a closed session. That's not really permitted. It's not a confidential discussion if a third party is in the room or somebody who's interested in the action is in the room. So we limit participation in a closed session to council members and to staff and consultants who are actually involved in the matter and have the obligation to keep things confidential. Sometimes a court, if there's been a repeated series of Brown Act violations, a court can order that a minute book be kept and it has specific requirements for that minute book that's not been a problem here and so there's not a requirement that a minute book be kept, although in the case of litigation matters, we keep attorney work product notes of what happened in a closed session. And I should note that the disclosure of a confidential closed session communication is prohibited by the Brown Act. So if the body decides to have a closed session and talk about a subject that is permitted to be discussed in closed session, it's illegal to go out of a closed session and tell somebody who's not involved in the closed session what happened in the closed session. The exception to that is obviously for a case where a participant in the closed session believes that the law was violated and they need to make a disclosure to a law enforcement authority, but that's a pretty rare exception. Enforcement and consequences. The basic enforcement remedy for the Brown Act violations is what we call notice and opportunity to cure. If somebody thinks we violated the Brown Act, the basic, most fundamental action is that they write us a letter and say, "I think you violated the Brown Act and here's why and you should fix it." And in those cases, as we've experienced here, if you respond to that letter and you say, "Okay, we won't do it again. We have an open session, an agenda item, it's not on the consent calendar," and we say, even as we did in our... on the consent calendar, and we say, even as we did in, in our particular instance, we don't believe that we violated the Brown Act, but we're going to agree not to do what you think we did, then that's, that avoids litigation. And it's intended to have, to generate a public discussion about the, the issue, and I think intended to have, to, to result in discussions like this one, where we just have kind of a re-emphasis about open government principles, even though we don't agree that the Brown Act was violated in either case that was brought to our attention. We don't intend to violate it, and so we agreed not to do what the particular individual said she thought we did. That's, that's known as this notice and opportunity to cure process. If that, if that occurs within the specified time limits in the Act, then that avoids litigation, and that's the chief benefit of it. Some agencies refuse to do that, and some agencies don't believe that the Act has been violated, and in those cases, the person who believes that the Act has been violated has the right to bring a civil action to invalidate whatever action they think was taken in violation of the Brown Act. So if they believe that something happened in a closed session that wasn't permitted to be happened, happen in closed session, they can try to invalidate that action. More likely, it's a situation where something gets approved in open session, and the individual believes that it wasn't on the agenda, or it wasn't properly on the agenda. A contract gets approved, or development of a project gets approved, and, and the challenger believes that that approval wasn't properly on the agenda, they'll try to invalidate that action. It happens sometimes in big projects, like a football stadium or something like that, where they use it as a, as a, an avenue to try to stop a project. And if, if in fact the Brown Act was violated, the court can order that action to be invalidated, and can order the public entity to pay attorney's fees and costs, which can obviously be expensive. It is also possible to bring a criminal prosecution for violation of the Brown Act if an action is taken at, at a meeting in violation of the Act with the specific intent to deprive the public of information to which it is otherwise entitled. That intent element of it is, is what is almost impossible to prove, and the, the reason that the last time I, I checked on this issue, there had never been a, a successful criminal prosecution for a violation of the Brown Act. And DA's generally don't bring criminal prosecutions for violations of the Brown Act, because they can't prove what the intent was. Usually, there's a good faith dispute over whether something should have been disclosed on an agenda, or should have been, or should not have been. And so very rarely are there criminal charges brought under the Brown Act, but it is possible. That, that's the slide we just talked about, the cease and desist process. So let's talk just for a minute about going beyond the basics, and then this will be the, the, the last slide. And I think that the best thing that a, a legislative body can do to sort of go beyond the basics of the Brown Act, beyond the basics of the Public Records Act, beyond the basics of the Politic Reform Act, is to recognize that openness is an organizational value. I don't think Councilman Deaton, that I can give you a definition of transparency that is measurable. I think that all I can do is say that many public entities find a way to, individual members of the entity find ways to emphasize a culture of openness, and, and kind of rededicate the agency to remembering that government is hard, and, and participating in the democratic process is hard. And any way we can find to make participating in the democratic process more accessible to the folks that we all serve becomes a good thing. And so that means writing in a way that's accessible to, to people. It means talking about what you're doing as you're doing it. It means not using acronyms and nicknames and shorthand that we all do from time to time. But it also means not, not engaging in communications that allow people to make the wrong inference about what happened. And a lot of times, you'll send out an email, for example, that says, I'm sure the city council thinks this is a great idea. And somebody gets a hold of that email and says, look, they've talked about it. That's not really what that person meant to say, but you can see how the inference could be drawn. And unfortunately, in our electronic communications age, people draw inferences from stuff like that. So I, I think attitude is, is important, and, and reinforcing an attitude that I believe to be already in place in Seal Beach, based on my, about a year now, I think there's a culture of openness here. I think, I think staff is responsive to public records requests. I think that people try to be as, as open as possible, but I think there's always ways to do it better. And I think the council can, can help in that, in that regard by improving communication and sort of reemphasizing those issues. Prioritizing all three of the transparency laws, recognizing that all three are important is another, is another way we can do that, and we can treat laws as the floor and not the ceiling. Some, some public agencies say, this is what the law says, that's all I've got to do. I think public agencies can always do a little better than the floor, and, and I think staff tries to do that whenever possible. One of the ways we're going to try to do it is, is to disclose more information on closed session agendas when we can. I think that's a good point that's been brought up here, and so we're going to try to do that, and we've done that, for example, on tonight's agenda. And that, that gets to that point of providing additional disclosure where it's advisable to do so. We are not going to compromise the city's interests. We're not going to compromise the city's legal position, but we'll, we'll provide additional levels of disclosure when it's in the city's interest to do so. And finally, we'll do, try to do a better job of explaining exceptions. When there's a reason why something doesn't appear on a closed session agenda in a way that somebody thinks it ought to, we'll try to make sure we explain that better, and we'll try to keep, sort of reinforcing those issues moving forward, because I think people have to understand, again, there's stuff that the law is, there's also stuff that the law is not. And, and at the staff level and the council level, we often have to find that balance and make people aware of what they expect the law to be is not always what it is. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Deaton.
I think that there's one thing that I would like to add to your list here, Craig, and that is where you have provide additional disclosure where advisable, and do a better job of explaining exceptions. I think that we should have another bullet there that says, provide additional reporting out where advisable. Because if I understand the criticism that we have been under correctly, it was maybe partially agendizing, but mostly how it was reported out. And that would be my suggestion. Having worked with every person on this day, I know we're all committed to open government and through, to communication and to what, you know, and get, because we don't even want to do this process by ourselves. We need the public to help us get this job done. We need to know what our community wants and what they think in order to do this job. So I, I, having worked with every one of you, I feel very strongly that we're all committed to that. So thank you for this workshop, I appreciate it.
Any other comments from the council?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Good job.
All right, we're going to move on now. I know the city attorney has been talking for an hour, but he is next on the agenda with the city attorney's report.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening again, members of the council. The city council met in closed session prior to a meeting this evening, and we met on the two items on the posted agenda. We'll take them in reverse order from the, the way they appear on the posted agenda. With regard to the item of anticipated litigation, all members of the council were present and voted unanimously to direct the city attorney to make a demand on the property owner and contractor who were involved in illegally cutting trees in Gum Grove Park for the full cost of restitution for the damage that was done to those trees and to replace those trees. And if that demand is not successful, the city council authorized our office to file civil litigation to recover those damages. That was the unanimous vote. And with regard to the other item on the agenda, we did not complete that discussion and, or did we? I'm getting a look.
No, we didn't.
We did not, I'm sorry, raised eyebrow.
I'm just trying to keep my eyes.
Stood for a minute there. We did not complete that discussion, and we'll be going back into closed session at the end of this meeting to finish it up.
Thank you. City manager report?
Yes, ma'am. I think you have a couple items tonight. First and foremost, as all of you know, but wanted to publicly announce, really proud of Dana Ingstrom, who was recently appointed as our new deputy city clerk. I want to turn it over to Robin just to make a few comments, and to Dana as well, but it goes without saying that she was tremendously missed in my office today, but really a proud of her, proud of her and the accomplishments she's achieved over the last year, especially as recreation coordinator, executive assistant in my office, and now being promoted to deputy city clerk. So with that, I'll turn it over to Robin.
Thank you, city manager Ingram. We are very excited to have Dana joining the city clerk's office. In her role as deputy city clerk, Dana's experience as both the executive assistant to the city manager and community services coordinator will contribute to advancing departmental efficiencies, promoting positive outreach to all constituents, and supporting ongoing governmental transparency objectives. Just today, and this one day, I observed so many people between the city council, the public, several of you in the public came over, and staff congratulating Dana, and it's very exciting to see somebody interested in becoming a deputy city clerk and learning more about open, transparent government and the items that we've been talking about tonight. So I'm very proud to have Dana as a deputy city clerk.
Thank you, Robin. Good evening, ma'am, and members of the city council. Thank you for this great opportunity. I look forward to this next chapter of my Seal Beach career and continuing to work with all of you.
Thank you, Dana.
Second item I have tonight, ma'am, as all of you know, really proud to have the executive management team that we have in place. Notable especially that we have a team of professionals that are dedicated to their profession and participate in several professional associations. I think it's even more commendable when we have a member of our executive management team who's recognized by his or her colleagues throughout the county. And with that, I'd like to congratulate our marine safety chief, Joe Bailey, who last week was unanimously elected as president of the Orange County Marine Safety Chiefs Association.
Wow.
So really proud of his accomplishment, congratulations. And then finally, my last item, if you'd just indulge me for another five minutes, I know it's getting late. And there's an item that came up today on the OCTA Board of Directors' agenda that had to do with Azure M2 Senior Non-Emergency Medical Senior Transportation Program. And Michael Ho, our deputy public works director, just did a little research on this today, since we have been talking about senior transportation, so I wanted to just give him an opportunity to talk about the County of Orange Office of Aging Program that they're offering as an additional service to seniors throughout the county. Michael?
Great, thank you, city manager Ingram. Very quickly, after doing some research over the internet today and trying to get my arms wrapped around this program, in addition to the city's Dollar Ride program, the Office of Aging, which is a county function offset of the county, they offer a program called the Senior Non-Emergency Medical Transportation Program. This program is basically for seniors over 60 years of age that live in Orange County that can take, transport seniors to any type of medical appointments, including therapy, dentistry, and prescription pickups and lab tests. So it's very similar to the Dollar Ride program that we have here in place in Seal Beach. Who's eligible for this program? Basically, if you live in Orange County and you're 60 years in age and over, you're fully 100% eligible for this program. The criteria, basically, it's similar to a Dollar Ride program. The rider has to schedule five days in advance. It's a 15-mile limit for, from your residence, a 10-mile limit outside of Orange County, that which includes for Seal Beach residents to go to Long Beach VA Hospital or the Long Beach Hospital. There is a 16-trip maximum for each resident, one-way trips. So for example, you can only do eight round trips per month. They emphasize a $2 donation per trip that could be waived if you are a low-income resident. Your care attendants, if you do need care attendants, are free to ride, and it operates from Monday through Saturday from 6:30 to 6:30. So how is this program funded? The funded, the, the program is basically funded through OCTA, Measure M2 funds. OCTA funds the Office of Aging, and through the Office of Aging, they contract through a transportation company called Abuzar. And this program has been going long since, back from 2007. So if you have any more additional questions, please contact Abuzar. Abuzar is the county's contractor. They can provide you the application, more detailed information, and things like that and attached to the website. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just need to make sure they're basic questions, otherwise we'll need to agendize it for discussion, but just wanted to make sure there was a timely announcement, since it was discussed at the OCTA board meeting today.
Good.
And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
And now, before we move on, Councilmember Miller reminded me, and I appreciate the reminder, there was a, prior to the closed session this evening, a, a member of the public, I think more than one member of the public advocated for the city council to initiate criminal charges in relation to the tree cutting in Gum Grove Park. And while we obviously appreciate that input, I did want to just, for the public's benefit as well as the council, note that under state law, the city prosecutor has a independent authority to the, to the people and is not influenced by the elected officials of the city. So if the city prosecutor and I have discussed this matter, and will continue to discuss this matter, and if there's criminal charges that would be productive and warranted, that would be independent of the civil lawsuit that we discussed here, but would be, the filing decision would be in the discretion of the city prosecutor and not something that could be directed by the city council.
Thank you for that clarity. Council comments? Councilmember Miller has none. Councilmember Deaton?
I just want to thank OCFA, the police department and staff, for your work on our tragedy last week, and I just thank all of you for the work that you did. It was, it was not easy work, and once again, I want to thank you for your service.
Councilmember Vier Papa?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I just want to mention that over the past five Fridays, I have attended the Public Policymaking Academy at UC Irvine through their extension program. This class was well-attended by fellow council members from Orange County, as well as county commissioners and government liaison people and department heads from various groups. Some of the topics we talked about were state taxes, local taxes, public bonds, water issues, gas issues, sanitation issues, affordable housing, transportation, and much more. It was very informative and very well-attended, and it gave me a chance to meet with other officials and commissioners and heads, so thank you.
Councilmember Song?
I just want to thank Dana. Dana, you hit the ground running in your present position, and I know you're going to do the same thing in your new position, and don't try to get away, because we know where you are.
And I'd like to mention that I did attend that SCAG meeting, that's the Association, Southern California Association.
That's the Association, Southern California Association of Governments, and it's a five-county organization that deals with primarily transportation. And I was hoping to get some information or some handouts on how Seal Beach could tap into some of their resources. They were focusing on pretty large-scale projects and activities, and unfortunately, Little O'Seal Beach wasn't on their list. So, but it was very well-attended, and I enjoyed going. I learned a lot, and thank you for letting me go. Okay, there, did you want to say something else? No. There are no scheduled council items on the agenda, so we'll go to the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to accept the consent at calendar item A, B, C, D, E, G?
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, please vote. Five to zero. What a surprise. Okay, item F. Can we have a staff report, please, or do you want to?
I think there was going to be a short staff report, I think.
Yes, so I know Michael's got just a couple slides on plans and specs that were discussed earlier, so I'll turn it over to Michael Ho, and then we'll open it up for council questions. Michael?
Okay.
Thank you, city manager Ingram. Tonight's agenda item F is the award of construction contract to Ramco for the council chambers and Seal Beach TV room upgrades and remodeling. As you recall, at the December 14th, 2015 council meeting, council rejected all bids based because the project was a little larger in size, so staff was directed to downsize the project. Staff has now re-scope the project, and the following slides show the new scope of work items. This slide shows the work in the council chambers area. In the green hashed area on the top is a new walkway path that will lead to the new access door in the blue shaded square to the right. The blue bottom shaded square to the left will be a new exit door that will be handicap-assisted. The next slide will show the storage room above the council chambers. This room will be remodeled to house the new Seal Beach TV and the new traffic management center on the bottom left. The next slide will show ADA requirements for the parking lot. This will be a new handicap parking stall. The area for the new stall will need to be re-graded. Some of the existing grades in the asphalt don't meet the existing or ADA compliance for slopes, so that will be re-graded. The next slide will show, the final slide, this is an old city hall. The restrooms are non-ADA compliant, and the remainder of the work will upgrade the restrooms, the public restrooms, to make it ADA compliant. And that concludes the slideshow. Ramco came in as a low bid of $310,000, and staff has sufficient funds to complete the project, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mayor, just to note, there was a revised item on the dais tonight.
Panic button. And council member Miller?
Okay, I've got about three or four questions. Is there going to be a door here?
Correct.
I couldn't quite follow it from this distance. Is there going to be a door over there?
No, there'll only be one access door in the rear. You're not going to put one over there? No, we felt that one access door would be sufficient. The grades in the front would require steps.
Well, over here now, is there going to be steps down, or is there going to be a ramp? Or what's going to be on this side?
On this side, it's a flat grade, so it'll be straight outside to the
Ground level?
Ground level.
This is higher than ground level.
Correct. It's kind of a visual impairment, but it's, it will come out flat, straight through.
Without a step down?
No. The grades in the rear or in the lawn or...
The other question I have is, is it possible to put a gate in the wall there so you can go out and hit the gate and go out? Operate it from one side? Because if there's an issue in this chamber, I don't want to go back that direction because you're, you're meeting the door, where people could be coming out that door. I'd rather go out this door and continue on into the alley. Have you thought about putting a gate? It can be a one-way gate that never opens except in emergency, just so that we can go out that way. There's no way I don't think the bastion behind the building?
Well, we would if, if the council was to go the direction of having a pathway straight to the parking lot. We would have to regrade the entire lawn to make way for a four-foot wide path.
A walk you're talking about?
Correct. A walkway. A direct walkway access. We could look into it.
Can't we just have a door in there? Go through the grass if you have to go through the grass? I mean, it's something we don't anticipate ever using, or we hope we never use.
We would have to have a designated path for emergency exit of travel.
Well, what about if you took his idea and you just made it a gate, and you didn't have connected to the idea of, okay, I don't know how to say this. Let's say it's not for emergency use, it's just an additional gate out there.
We can look into that. I think that's possible as a non-designated
That's what I'm really saying. I don't anticipate using it, or I hope I never use it, so I'm, or anybody ever uses it. The other thing, is the dais going to be made of special material?
No, the dais will stay the same, but we are putting bulletproofing material, ballistic material inside the dais.
It'll be equivalent to having it on the whole dais.
Correct.
You know, the other thing, at OCT, we have, we have a door where you, is there going to be a ramp, by the way, that's on that side?
The ramp will be, the designated ramp will be that side.
Okay. We have this extended all the way across, and there's a door we can go in and out, but I think the part here is also made of bulletproof type of stuff, materials. So my question is, because then if you're passing through on the ground or however you're getting out of this building, you have, you don't have this open area here. It's just a question. I mean, I know it's never been considered in the design.
Yeah, we did not anticipate having a panel for that, but the panels that are going in the dais are removable, so in the event of an emergency, each panel can be removed underneath the dais.
Why would we want to remove it?
Shield.
Has a shield.
Oh, oh, oh.
It can be portable.
Okay, that's good. All right, then I don't ask the chief any questions. I was just, I was just thinking this big open area and that door leaves a lot of open area.
You're going to hold the shield for all of us as we go?
Only if you're running fast right behind me. Okay, I think, the gate was the main thing. I just want a way to leave without going back to the front of the chamber. With that, I move this item.
Second. Okay, please vote. Five to zero. Adopted. Item H, Westminster Avenue Storm Drain Study Report. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, mayor, thank you. Tonight, Caesar Rangel, our associate engineer, will present this item. Caesar?
Thank you, managers Ingram. Good evening, madam mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, we have a receiving file of the Westminster Avenue Storm Drain Study Report Project, CIP number ST603, and authorize staff to proceed with the BACP grant application submitted. So the Westminster Storm Drain Study Report, CIP ST603, is basically a storm drain study to analyze the Westminster Channel, which is located northerly on Westminster Avenue between Seal Beach Boulevard and the west city limits. On October 12, 2015, city council approved a PSNA professional service agreement for Anderson Penna to perform a study for a report, storm drain study report. That report concluded that it could be, it could be covered, and a portion of that would be covered with a 72-inch reinforced concrete pipe, and then another portion of it would be covered with a 54-inch concrete pipe. So it would be reinforced concrete pipe throughout the whole stretch of the channel there. Additionally, council, our staff, the work staff, that's always looking for grant opportunities, so we, the BCIP, which is the Bicycle Improvement Program, the OCTA, staff right of way approached that grant. Basically, it's a federally funded grant where they fund pedestrian and bicycle improvement projects. So we saw this opportunity to apply for this grant to build a, cover the channel as a further report, and then build a Class 1 bike path on top of that channel there with other bicycle amenities like a shelter and around there in the middle section of that storm drain. So this would build a Class 1 bike path on top of the storm drain channel if the grant is awarded. And in addition to the existing Class 2 bike path in Westminster, so this would be an addition to that. So basically financially, we, as I mentioned, we award a contract to Anderson Penna for $38,450. We originally budgeted $70,000 for this CIP project, and leaving us a balance of $31,520. As far as the BACP, it requires a 3% match from city funds. The city will be matching $336,000 from general fund street improvement and storm drain assigned on balance. With that, the total grant project is at $2.8 million. And with this, I conclude my staff report, and I will answer any questions.
Mayor, again, just to note, there was a revised item with respect to the staff report in terms of funding source for matching funds.
Does that create a problem? Taking it, we were taking it out of gas tax, right?
No, we're just using a different funding source for the matching of $336,000. So it doesn't create a problem, it's just we're using a different funding source.
Okay. Okay, whatever you say. Anyone else have a question?
I have a couple. First of all, since I'm on the board, I kind of forget all these different grants. When's this grant going to be decided on? You know?
When it's going to be decided?
Are you going to make an application? When's the board going to review the, all the applications?
I believe they're issuing for the fall of this year. At this point, OCT is going to review the, I have a response to the people who are receiving the grant, the cities.
The other question I have now, as I did my calculation, there's about $920,000 for the bike portion of this project, and it's going on top of the, of the concrete that's already there for the, for the drainage. Is that, what's the $920,000 going to cover? Or is that the top cover of the, over the pipes?
The $920 is to actually, is to build the Class 1 bike path on top of the channel.
But it's already got a metal, it's already got a concrete cover, right?
No, right now, it's
Oh, so that will pay for the concrete cover?
It will be.
Well, you're going to put some pipes in the ground, right?
Yes, correct, that's correct.
The cover that goes over that's the bike path?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is this, I heard something about the property. Is this, is this, whose property is this?
Half the city's and half of Leisure World.
And Leisure World's going to deed it to us or something?
Yes.
The ditch?
And other property adjacent to it.
Okay. The other question I have, one more question, is, my concern is, I guess this fall will be okay, but we're going to have to suspend these funds, we're not going to be using them, although I don't think we're going to be doing a storm drain fund balance, or any storm drain work this next fiscal year. I mean, we've got to store some money up again. I mean, we have a project in Seal Beach that's, I mean, up in Todgeburg East that I forget, it's a million plus, I think. A couple million? What is, do you know what that line from Guava to Elder is, that project? You know, we bought the house for? I've forgotten how much that is.
A lot.
Yeah, I know. Well, we still got to save someday. But I guess that's okay, Michael.
What's that to do with it?
Well, that's why we're taking the money out of, from the storm drain fund balance. The storm drain is going to someday be paid from, from that fund, probably. My question is, we have no projects, so taking money from that fund, does that mean anything right now?
No, not at this time, madam mayor.
That's what I meant. The fiscal year, we have no plans for it.
Right. The Guava project is several million dollars.
What do you, what do you assume the assigned street improvement, what will we be foregoing if we have to use this money later? If we use this money for this project? Will we be foregoing slurry seal or foregoing?
No, we're not taking any money that would impact the slurry program or the concrete repair program.
But as far as repairing streets, it would?
Yes, because that's gas tax money.
Okay, and we have enough money this year to cover that?
Yes.
Okay. With that, that's all my questions.
Is there a motion?
Madam mayor, I'd just like to mention that I drove by there again today, and this is sadly needed. It's very dangerous there, and I fully support this.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to adopt item H?
Don't move.
Second? Is there a second?
Oh, is there a second?
No.
Second.
It's there.
Second.
Okay. Please vote. Okay, five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and the city attorney has an additional announcement?
I apologize, mayor. I got so excited to get to the end of my presentation, and I know the rest of the room was excited, too. I just forgot one thing, which is, the city clerk has, for each member of the council, a copy of our Brown Act compliance guide in hard copy form, which includes a current copy of the Brown Act for your reference, and also to help you get to sleep at night if you need it. And it's an expensive document to copy, so instead of making copies for the public, or making the public pay for copies, I've also given Robin some little thumb drives that have a PDF version of the manual on there, and so a public, member of the public can just request that from, from Robin at her office, and they'll give, give that to them, so they have, they have access to a copy of the guide as well.
Good, thank you.
Have we announced we're going back into closed session?
Not yet.
Okay.
There are no public hearings on the agenda this evening. There is no unfinished or continued business. We've already heard from the Bay Theater, so we will adjourn back into closed session this evening.
Only with regard to item A on the agenda.
Only, okay, as stated by the city attorney, and then to the city council meeting on May 23rd at 5:30 to meet in closed session if deemed necessary.